Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the February 10th briefing session of the Morrisville Town Council. It is now 6:30 and we are live over the Internet. We're doing live streaming audio tonight for the very first time. We're kind of testing it out and seeing how that works, so mind your Ps and Qs, be on the best behavior, and get ready for more of that. We'll hopefully do a little video in another year or so and have the full range. So I appreciate Diana setting all that up. I'm going to turn it over to Town Attorney Frank Gray to do tonight's invocation. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mayor. Please bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the community that is Morrisville. We thank you for the families and businesses and town staff and elected leaders that make up this town. We ask for your blessing on the leaders of this town. Give them your wisdom and experience and help them to make decisions that are pleasing in your sight. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Amen. Should we please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God and with God the Lord.
Okay, before we adopt tonight's agenda, it's the, per our code of ethics with the town of Morrisville, it's the duty of council members to be not only free of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda, but also the appearance of conflict of interest. So I ask the council if there are any items on the agenda which present that issue with you?
None.
Nope.
Okay, seeing them, I'd like to have a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we have an agenda. First item tonight is Black History Month proclamation. Whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African-Americans to our economic, cultural, and spiritual and political development. And whereas in 1915, Dr. Carter Gudwin Woodson, noted African-American scholar and son of former slaves, founded the Association of the Study of Negro Life and History, which was later renamed the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History. And whereas, Dr. Woodson initiated Black History Week, February 12, 1926, which was celebrated the second week of February for many years as it coincided with the birthdays of Frederick Douglass and Abraham Lincoln. Whereas in 1976, as part of the nation's bicentennial, Black History Week was expanded and became established as Black History Month, and now is celebrated all over North America. And whereas, the observance of Black History Month calls for a nation's attention to the continued need to build a society that embraces our democratic ideals and this year's celebrations and recognition of Black History Month. Now therefore I, Mark Stolman, Mayor on behalf of the Morrisville Town Council, hereby proclaim February 2015 as Black History Month in Morrisville, and urge all citizens to celebrate our diverse heritage and culture and continue the efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful, and prosperous for all. Adopted this 10th day of February 2015. And next we're going to hear from stormwater update. This is our quarterly report. Seems like it's every month, though. It's good to see you again, though.
Yeah, I feel like I haven't been here in a while. You getting bumped. I'll start out with the public education, outreach, and public participation. We, this presentation is kind of a combination since it has been a while since I've given an update. It's kind of more of a summary of 2014, but we participated in National Night Out and were able to talk with and hand out brochures to about 500 people. We're also working on a pet waste campaign and pledge. You can go online and take the pledge to clean up after your pet. And that's been, we've had a lot of people that like that. We've also continued to add outreach and education resources to the website for both citizens and the businesses in town. Part of the pet waste campaign, we've kind of partnered with the vets and pet suppliers in town and have some of our information there. The rain committee met last month and made plans for some spring activities. We're going to do another stream clean with the committee, and we're also looking at some other potential activities to get more people involved. We also had a good turnout at Winterfest. This year we had, I think, over 500 brochures with candy canes and we ran out really early, so we're going to have to, that was already about three times as much as we did last year, so we'll have to ramp that up even more. You can see some of our rain committee members that helped out with that this year. That was a really big help. We definitely couldn't have done it without them. Post-construction site runoff controls, if you remember, this is kind of the BNP's that go in place that are in perpetuity to help treat stormwater runoff from developed sites. In 2014, we had around 98 stormwater reviews. That includes reviewing for compliance with our floodplain and buffer ordinances. So lots of projects coming in. We also inspected 140 BNP's and sent out annual reports. If you recall, as part of our stormwater utility fee where the town is providing those annual inspections to stay in compliance with our Phase II permit. So these private BNP owners can still choose to do a third-party inspection if they want, but if not, the town provides that for them. Just another example of kind of a before and after. It's amazing what you find when you walk into the woods. You don't expect a BNP to be there. Moving along, public, or pollution prevention, good housekeeping. We had, it's probably over 43 drainage concerns reported 2014. Each and every one of those, we, somebody from the stormwater staff goes out and personally investigates and tries to address and solve the issue. Still doing street sweeping six times a year, and Deener's looking at providing some type of quantifiable credit for doing that, street sweeping. So hopefully with the Jordan rules, we'll get, be able to actually see a credit benefit for that. Always doing drainage system repairs as they come up. This picture is an example of a pipe separation perimeter park. You can see where that one section of pipe had totally sunk down. A lot of this stuff, we had to work closely with public works staff, and we've gotten on a pretty good coordination. We do monthly meetings now with Blake's staff to coordinate stormwater issues with public works. Other efforts, I tried to summarize here. We got our annual reports submitted to NC Deener on time, and we even kind of got some kudos from the staff at Deener. There's been, I know one person that called and they called Mike Randall at Deener to, you know, to see who's a good example they could look at, how they're running their MS4 program, and he directed them to Morrisville, so that was, I thought that was pretty good. And we had 14 illicit discharges that we investigated. 10 of those ended up in a notice of violation. One of those was a civil penalty assessed. In the end, it was resolved. We're getting ready to start in March, our contractor for the Phase II of our new watershed Again, those are literally walking the streams and kind of getting a baseline assessment of our water resources in town and where there's potential issues. Lots of legislation seems like the last few years, and I'm sure that'll continue in this next session related to stormwater. Try and keep up with that stuff so that we're on top of it. We're looking at a couple different stream buffer and stream bank stabilization projects. One of them, just last week, we submitted for hopefully trying to get a grant to help pay for that. We won't find out until September timeframe, but we're hoping we'll be able to kind of leverage some grant monies for one of those projects. Still working on the BNP and drainage retrofits at the fire station. I know Chief Wright's tired of water coming in the building, so he wants to get that fixed. We're working on it. And somebody who's helping out a whole lot with that is our new stormwater engineer that we were able to fill that we'll introduce here in a minute. Quick financial update. As of last month, we collected about 90% of our stormwater utility fees, so it's progressing well. Nutrient offset fees, I don't think this has changed since the last update, but we're right around $200,000 for the Newt River Basin. And again, those watershed assessments that we're doing, part of that is trying to identify projects that we can use this money for to retrofit and try and bring some of that stream health back up if it's impaired. Current budget total, as of early last month, we had spent or allocated about 64% of that. We've got some training coming up for staff as well as a couple of these other projects that we'll continue to work on. So trying to keep it short, that's it in a nutshell. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, any questions for Robert? Michael?
Just one, thank you. I know there was some talk of it. Do you still plan on, is there any thought of going to inspections every two years for BNP on maybe some occasions where it's a brand-new system that was just put in or anything like that?
Well, under our Phase II permit issued by the state, it's required to have an annual inspection.
Every year?
Yeah. So, yeah, so I mean, the renewals for those permits will be coming up. I believe next fall, we'll have to start looking at applying for the renewal. Typically, usually we see stuff getting a little bit tightened more than loosened, but we'll see what comes up with that.
I was just wondering, if that's what the bigger towns have to do too?
Yeah, oh yes.
Everywhere in Raleigh, they're...
Yes, yeah, there's, so we're a Phase II community. Some of the larger towns are Phase I's. There's larger cities like Raleigh and Durham are Phase I's, and they actually have to do inspections of MPDS industrial permits as well, which we don't have to do. Deener does that for us here.
That was it.
Are you planning on having the stream walk in the spring open to more people, or are you going to still keep it tight?
I know we discussed it last month. I think that we're still going to just do the committee disco round. We're looking at trying to do an organized drain marking thing and open that up to everybody. And I think that's something that the committees want to take on, is at least annually do an organized storm drain marking event where we can get a lot more broader participation. Some of it with the stream walks is still the, kind of the potential liability issues that we're looking at.
I know of a neighborhood that wouldn't mind getting the markings. Get around to it.
Yeah, sort it on.
Is he down here?
Yep, I got two quick ones. Robert, you mentioned some enforcement issues and one penalty. Were those in residential areas, commercial area, mixture?
The one penalty was the commercial area. We had, you know, we had sent them the notice of violation without a penalty and just asked them to respond and say how they're going to prevent it from happening again, and unfortunately they just didn't respond at all, so.
And take the next step. Okay. And as far as finding or people passing on concerns and issues, what's the best way for them to do it? To go to the website and input it?
Yeah, probably the best way to keep it organized the best is to use the report of concern online, because then it gets directed and we have kind of written. It's a lot easier to go on than trying to catch somebody in the office on the phone. And, you know, that way his staff's out in the field even a lot of times during the day. We still check an email on our phones so we can get it then, so.
Okay, and is that how you're getting all your concerns, or are you getting them all different methods?
It's pretty, yeah, pretty varied. Some people take use of the, take advantage of the online report, phone calls, and just people email and find our email online, so.
Okay, okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
I just want to commend you on the continued success of this program. In fact, a couple of events I've attended the last month or so, I've heard very positive things about our stormwater program in Morrisville, most recently from some leaders at the North Carolina Conservation Fund. So I'm very pleased to see us come a long way, and thank you for all of your hard work.
All right, thank you.
And you want to, you have a new member of your team?
Yes. So, do you want to, Joshua? So this is Joshua Baird. He's our new stormwater engineer. And I'll just kind of, Joshua is originally from Kinston, North Carolina, so he's a North Carolina guy. He graduated with his bachelor's in zoology in 2009, valedictorian. That's pretty impressive. And then he, after that, he worked for a company kind of just down the road here and decided he didn't enjoy it, so he went back to school and got his master's from biological and agricultural engineering at NC State with Dr. Bill Hunt. He did research on wet detention basins at the sand hills that were not holding water and collected data and monitoring. He also helped with a variety of other BNP research and design projects while he was Joshua enjoys the outdoors and loves the water, so it kind of fits in perfectly.
It's good.
And he's soon to be a new father, so.
Congratulations.
Josh, you want to say anything, or I don't want to put you on the spot.
I'm a big ear. I already do it. I really enjoy getting to everyone. I'm with Robert and Rich. Both been very helpful getting started.
It's been good, looking forward to the future.
We're going to welcome aboard and look forward to seeing all the great things you're going to do. Thank you. Next up, Mr. Benjamin Howell. You have for us a three-hour presentation on transit choices, correct?
Hopefully it won't be quite three hours. I'll try and keep it down to maybe two or so. So, and you'll have to forgive me, this is a presentation that was put together by our consultants, so I'm sort of going off some notes here, but we'll try and get through it as quickly as we can. So, purpose of the presentation tonight is really to discuss the, what the differences between this study and previous studies have been, and discuss the Transit Choices Document, which is a key element of our planning process because it provides a clear baseline of information and helps with the understanding of transit and how transit works generally. This understanding will be the basis on which we build the next steps. I'll briefly touch base on the overall study to reiterate how the Transit Choices Document fits in, and will also touch on the steps after the Choices Document to let you know where we are heading next. Lastly, and many times, I will encourage you to go to the Wake Transit website to review the Choices Document and provide your comments on the survey, which is on the website listed there, and you'll see it listed throughout the presentation. So as you can see, the base case has been made numerous times for transit, for further transit investment based on our population projections. We're a county that's very fast-growing, made up of diverse communities, each with different needs and desires for moving around our region. Today, transit service is an important way that thousands of Wake County residents and employees get to work, go to school, go to the doctor, run their errands, and more. As more people move to Wake County and as the demographics change, there's an increasing market demand for walkable places to live, work, and play that function better with good quality transit. At the same time, there's growing demand for basic accessibility in communities throughout the county. This is the quick, brief transit planning timeline of transit planning in Wake County. As you can see, it starts all the way back in 1997, and the counties and the region, Triangle Region, have done numerous planning studies and things over the years. And the most recent effort was the draft Wake County Transit Plan, which was produced in 2012, which provided a more complete picture of investment, but also raised a lot of questions. The current effort will learn from these previous efforts, but also be quite different. As you probably have already heard from others or read, the differences are already becoming apparent. So how will this process be different? It will be different because it's going to ask the community to establish expectations for its overall transit network. It's different because it will focus on the fundamental characteristics and trade-offs of transit. These principles, discussed in more detail on the next slides, will set realistic base expectations that will be better understood by our community. The Wake Transit Investment Strategy is intended to ask questions of stakeholders and the public about how transit investments can best be made, and to respond to those answers with recommendations for transit network and infrastructure improvements. Note that the community will be engaged in a technical discussion of goals and preferences rather than experts just recommending an investment based on their opinion. This slide shows the work that the advisory committee, which our very own Mayor Protem Johnson serves on, did in its first exercise. As a warm-up, the group was asked to plan for a made-up city. The colored squares that you see on the map represent different demand areas for transit. The red, blue, and green lines represent proposed transit routes. Note that the group was not asked to just look at one line or one route, but instead was asked to consider the network that can get people to multiple destinations. Network thinking will be key in Wake County where we have spread out destinations and the need for multiple connected routes as well. A second key concept, often overlooked in transit, is frequency. If you look at standard transit maps, including the one in Wake County, you cannot see frequency information readily, yet it's very important. The colors on this map show some of the routes in Wake County match the colors that were used in the advisory panel exercise. The green lines that you see represent areas with transit service, but some of that frequency may be up to an hour long between times that the bus will arrive. The red lines, which there are very few, represent areas with service every 15 minutes. We will be asking the community their opinions on which is better service and which service you would use more regularly. More and more agencies are highlighting the high-frequency service, not just on maps, but throughout their system signage, and you can see some examples up above there. There are two trade-offs that are key to this study. These are called trade-offs because the more you do of one, the less you can do of the other. I will cover these in more detail in a bid as part of the Choices Report, but one of the consultants who are we working with on this study, Jared Walker, started incorporating these because communities could very easily, and did, ask for a plan that focused on both sides at the same time. Plans that tried to focus on both were fundamentally at odds service-wise, financially, and politically because they didn't clearly understand their goal. Moving on to the Choices Report, which was released on January 23rd. Although we have communicated our intentions with this study as addressed in the previous slides, the Transit Choices Document is the first time all the new concepts and terms linked to Wake County's unique attributes are available in one spot. The intention of this document is to correctly frame the question before we jump to developing potential solutions. The chapters of the report are set up conversationally. The report provides a history and key elements of the previous transit planning studies, and then provides, also provides baseline data on Wake County characteristics. These will be detailed briefly, a little more in a moment, but the important thing to remember is that different characteristics may dictate and lead to different transit investments. The report then introduces the transit fundamentals and the transit toolbox and the major choices facing our community in investing in transit. These next few slides show some maps that include, that are all also in the Transit Choices Document, the What We Know section. The map you see in front of you designate shows population density according to the 2010 census information. Just as advisory committee found their exercise, note that there are various spots that make logical destinations for transit service. And this map shows employment density, which as you can see from this map, Morrisville has fairly high employment density versus population density. And this next map shows existing ridership among the agencies that serve this area, CAT, Triangle Transit, C-Trans, and Wolfline. Note again, there are connections between service frequency, the attributes of the location served, and the number of riders. And finally, this map is the, shows the expected congestion in Wake County on the roadways and surrounding areas in 2040 based on the regional travel model. The dark red signifies the roadways will be overcapacity. Yellow signifies roads that are nearing or at capacity in 2040. So again, as you can see, yet another reason for more investment in transit to try and get some of these cars off the roads. These tables note how the hours of service provided per person, which is abundance, and the transit trips per person, which is relevance, in Wake County compared to peer cities. And you'll notice the Wake County is highlighted in green at the end, but one note I did want to make is the green Wake County includes the Wolfline Network, which is the NC State University bus route. The blue bar beside the green at the very end is Wake County without the NCSU Wolfline, so you can see even how much the Wolfline inflates Wake County's transient, current Last, on this brief tour, the Transit Choices Document, a discussion of walkability and its impact on transit use. The top graphic displays a grid network where people from many streets can get to a transit station in a certain distance. The bottom graphic displays a non-grid network where because of the lack of connectivity between streets, fewer people would be able to walk to the station at the same distance. Safe, comfortable street crossings are also critical. Transit generally requires street crossing for half the trips. As Jared Walker has said, most time you're not going to have transit running on both sides of the street all the time. It's going to be running on one side of the street, so you have to be able to provide safe crossings at the stops to allow people to get on and off, because you're always one way or another on a transit trip. You're almost always going to have to cross the street, whether it's going to transit or coming home from transit. In the Transit Toolbox section, the report moves from Wake County attributes to transit fundamentals. To help with the community dialogue, specific terms are used to differentiate concepts and Among other key fundamentals, the report identifies recipes that tend to yield high ridership. In one method, we can increase commuter service and add park and ride lots throughout the county to serve major employment centers and look to provide transit that bypasses congestion. In another, we can put transit routes where the density and other transit supportive factors are already. The report does not suggest how we should invest, but it does note that routes that do not match these recipes will not yield high ridership. The report also details different transit technology options. The technologies were discussed as part of the previous planning efforts, but the Choices Document is focused on the benefits and costs of each and the related trade-offs. So as you see on this slide, the final section discusses the major trade-off the community has to consider in transit investment. These trade-offs are correctly defined as spectrum since you can do both, but the more you do of one, the less you can do of the other. It is anticipated that our community investment will not be at either extreme of either spectrum, but exactly where we will be is still unknown. Questions on the survey relate directly to providing insight into these trade-off choices, and answers to the survey will help steer our future activities. These graphics highlight the differences on the ridership versus coverage spectrum. Systems that want to generate ridership will, following the ridership recipe, focus where the high ridership characteristics are already. Systems that want to provide coverage will focus on proximity to potential users. Note the quick phrase summaries quoted on each goal. Both of these are worthy goals. The important thing for the community to understand is that they are trade-offs, and we must be clear on where on the spectrum we want to be. Looking at the other two trade-offs between the capital and operating goals, they note that the systems that want to change the look and feel of transit will focus on infrastructure, including stations, solutions to bypass congestion, and... including stations, solutions to bypass congestion, and vehicles. Systems that want to deliver service as soon as possible will focus on getting service on existing networks, roads, and rails, and expanding the service appropriately to new areas. Again, note the quick phrase summaries quoted on each goal, and again, note that both of these are worthy goals. In the last few slides that I have, I want to cover how the elements I covered will be used in later stages. The terminology and decisions in the Choices Document will be used throughout. It is likely that you've heard, perhaps from Advisory Committee members, blogs, or news stories, people using this new framing to describe a decision before us. We hope that this new way of phrasing the issues limits the amount of time we talk past each other and allows us to develop the right solutions for our community. As you can see, an advisory committee made up of over 70 people has been created to represent the voice of those around the county, and shown on the screen are just a few of the groups that are represented, as well as all of the municipalities which received representation as well. To date, the committee has spent about 10 hours working through some of the issues that are detailed in the Transit Choices Report. The consultant team and staff will develop scenarios based on the Advisory Committee's work. These scenarios, not a finalized plan, will be shared with the public. A final plan will be developed based on the public comments and the best compatible features of the different scenarios. The scenarios will build on the transit fundamentals and the trade-offs. The scenarios will show the strengths and weaknesses of transit systems tilted toward different sides of the spectrum. These are the expected scenarios. They may be a little bit different, but we're expecting to have a couple scenarios focusing on high ridership, one looking at more infrastructure, one looking at more operating or more buses on the road, pretty much, and then we'll also look at a couple of high-coverage scenarios. Again, one where we add infrastructure, the other where we're adding operating costs or buses. The next major step is to develop the scenarios, which will start in March. Between now and then, we encourage everyone to read the Transit Choices Report and take the online survey. The project team will continue to meet with stakeholders and interested groups throughout the process. So again, please go visit the website, read the report, take the survey that's on the website. I also wanted to let everyone know that we have a public information session scheduled to talk about the Transit Choices Report here in Mooresville on Monday, February 23rd at 6:30 PM in the council chambers. At that point, Wake County staff and possibly even someone from the consultant team will be here to, again, present the report and be available to answer any questions. There are also note cards or postcards upfront by the agendas that have some brief information on the front and the web links, and then also has a spot on the back for you to write comments that you can turn back in to Wake County. And with that, I'm done.
Thank you, Benjamin. I do want to just acknowledge Mayor Protem Liz Johnson for her support and being a part of this. Appreciate you spending the time to do that and representing us. So I was going to turn it over to you for a few minutes if you had a couple thoughts or questions, and let you lead that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I'm not the only one. I am the elected official from Mooresville that's on the Advisory Committee, but we also have Peter Pritchett, who's a Mooresville resident and a member of our Planning and Zoning Board, who's on the Advisory Committee, and Stephen Crutchfield, who works for Lenovo here in Mooresville, and he's on the Advisory Board. So we have three representatives from Mooresville there. But thank you. I appreciate that. It's been an exciting... And of course, Benjamin's there all the time, too. I'm sorry, Benjamin. He's always with us when we talk anything transportation-related. And Benjamin's been there and been a facilitator, not at my table, but has been there and has also done an excellent job. So thank you for all your time. You put in more time than the three of us have on the Advisory Committee. One thing I will just mention real quick, the Advisory Committee and the meetings we've gone through and the efforts that we've put in have been wonderful, and I think we're all learning a lot and we're making some progress in this whole topic. But today, Councilmember Colleen and I attended the first public meeting that Wake Transit has had on this issue, and one of the things that came up was light rail. And I know it's been in the paper that the Advisory Committee, when we had our last meeting and broke up into nine different groups to design a system, did not include light rail in any of those nine systems. Seven of the nine included commuter rail. So anyhow, at today's meeting, that came up, and that was a question and a bit of a topic of conversation, and the answer that came from the folks there from...I'm not sure who answered the question now.
Tim Maloney.
The answer that came about light rail was that, in the end, one of these four scenarios will include a light rail in it. So the four scenarios that will be available for the public to weigh in on at the end will include commuter rail, light rail, and then, of course, bus service, and then we'll all get the opportunity to weigh in and see how these four topics that we talked about: coverage versus ridership, infrastructure versus operating, how that all plays, and then we'll all be able to weigh in. But anyhow, I think it's incredibly important that all of us participate in this conversation. This is an important conversation to the town of Mooresville. There will be some kind of service here in Mooresville, so it's our opportunity now to weigh in to say whether we want bus, commuter rail, light rail, and as Benjamin talked about, the most important and the best way to do that is to read the report and then, of course, weigh in on the survey. And the survey's going to be open through March 5th, so we have until the 5th to do all our homework, and I mean all of us in this room and the residents of Mooresville. It's our opportunity to do our homework and weigh in through the survey.
Okay. Thank you, Liz.
But thank you.
Did you have any additional thoughts?
Yeah, it's a pretty dense report. It's 88 pages, lots of data, so pretty much scanning through it gives you enough feel for it to actually take the survey, and it's my impression that, once the four things come out, then people, they're really looking to hear the feedback because it's easier for people to criticize things and try to make things better than to create. So I think it's a good idea that they have, that they're going to put four things out there, and then you're going to know which one you really gravitate towards. So that's when a lot of the good feedback is going to happen, and from that, they're going to create the final report. So get involved now, but then really get your teeth into it when they come out with the four, is what I'm going to do.
Thank you. All right, any questions for Benjamin?
Just a couple. Well, maybe it's for Mayor Protem Johnson, but what's the process after they submit these final reports from the Advisory Committee? Is it put to...and they take the public comment, then is there a final plan that's going to be provided to the commissioners of Wake County? And is there a timeline of what the end product would be?
Clearly, we're heading, this whole process, we're heading toward the Wake County Commissioners deciding whether to put this on the ballot for a referendum and for the half-cent sales tax. So clearly, we're kind of all leading in that direction. I'm not sure that all that we're talking about now is doable without...well, I know it's not doable without additional funding, and that half-cent sales tax would be important. If that's not a part of this, there needs...other funding options need to be looked at, but would be more difficult, I would think.
And I think Durham and Orange County had success in this. I'm assuming that they went through the same kind of process to arrive at community consensus on what their boards would approve for funding mechanisms and everything. And then some questions that I get asked a lot, sometimes during my office hours recently, well, you already answered one, is light rail off the table? And from what I'm hearing, it's not. The other question I get a lot is, will there be service from the airport? Now, I've heard from some critics that there wouldn't be service from the airport because there's not enough people coming to there, so I don't know if that's something that's come up during...
That has come up, and I know in the different groups, I think we all...Benjamin, you remind me if I speak incorrectly, but I think all four scenarios that we came up with included some kind of service to the airport.
Yeah, I think most of the, most if not all, the Advisory Committee groups did provide service to the airport, and that's certainly, that's a major destination point that will be looked at very closely as far in the transit network. There's, one of the things that we'll have to get down to, at some point, whether it's through this process or once we really, once we get the...if the half-cent sales tax gets passed and we start really actually building our network, is can the airport provide some of that service with their money versus using some of the public money to provide the service? Because one of the things Jarrett Walker has pointed out is that airport service, it's aimed to a very particular customer. It's not necessarily a service that someone who lives here will use every day. They may use it once a month or once a week or something, and so there is some question, I think, on the consultant side, or he's brought that up, that we as a community will have to consider, is is it worthwhile to spend this limited transit budget that we're going to have, providing service to the airport, or is it better to use that budget instead to provide more service to some of the communities? And so that's one of the things we'll be talking about through the process.
And that's not easy. I will tell you, that's the struggle right there, and that is not an easy thing to do. When you're sitting at a table with eight other people and we're trying to figure out, and we're eight or nine very different people from different parts of Wake County, that conversation is difficult.
And the final thing is, I know that the RTA, and I think Mayor Protem and I have gone to a couple last year, last few years, on bus rapid transit, stuff like that, so I guess that will be something factored in as well.
Yeah, and we'll be looking at, we'll be looking at different technologies. There's different, as they call, flavors of bus rapid transit that you'll see as we start working through to the next stage of coming out with scenarios. There will be different flavors of bus rapid transit. There will be the, what would be considered the gold-centered bus rapid transit, which is its own guideway, its own infrastructure, pretty much very similar to light rail, and then there will be the cheaper bus rapid transit, which is trying to do bus rapid transit with the infrastructure we have in place. But we'll be looking at all of that information. For the most part, we're going to, I think the goal is to stay, try and stay a step back from the specific technologies for a while. The focus for the next little while of this is going to be really, let's look at our overall network and our corridors and figure out where we want to serve and what type of frequency and what type of service we want these areas to have, and then we'll figure out, okay, now we know these corridors are where we want to serve, these areas are where we want to serve, what's the best technology for that? Do we need high-frequency service there? Well, then, it's either high-frequency local bus or maybe bus rapid transit, or is this more of an express commuter-type service where the travel pattern really is, everyone goes there in the morning, works all day, and then leaves in the evening? So the technology, we're trying to stay a step back from the technology for at least a little while to really look at our network first, and then we'll, as we get our network and our corridors, we'll start narrowing in on technology. But ultimately, this is the plan that has to be adopted by the commissioners in order to go out for that half-cent sales tax, because this is the plan, eventually, when it's adopted, this is the plan that will dictate how that money from that half-cent sales tax will be used.
Benjamin, I think we have one last question.
Thank you very much.
It's not so much a question. I did take the survey. I told everybody, go on, take it. It's under five minutes, and they just want your feedback, and you don't have to read the report to give your feedback for the survey.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Thank you, Benjamin. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have For the Good of the Order. Turn it over to the manager.
Thank you, Mayor. In my latest edition of the News and Notes, I provided some information about the fiscal year 2016 budget process. I also have asked you to look at your calendars for three specific dates. One of those would be coming up in early March related to a CIP workshop, and the two, one in May and one in June, would be related to the mini sessions once the budget has been presented. So would ask that you would check your calendars with your approval. I'd like to go ahead and include those on the next meeting agenda for official adoption, so unless I hear from somebody that there's conflicts, I'll put that on the agenda for next week, next time. The part that I forgot to mention with the budget process is we are going to try something a little bit new this year, and we're going to open up our budget portal twice. And by early next week, we're going to open up the budget portal to ask some broad-based goal philosophical questions of the public on what are your budget priorities, what programs do you value, and just gather some holistic information. We're going to leave it open about six weeks while we're working on putting together a budget for you to look at. We will compile that information and present that to you as a part of the budget workshop and presentation so that you may consider that, and then we'll reopen it again, as we've done in the past, once the budget is actually out there for people to comment on. So we will be promoting that through our social media, on our website, and in the next week in Mooresville as well.
Okay.
The other item that also I included in the News and Notes was an update on Northwest Park, which was current until I pushed the button to send it, and we got some new information today, so I'd like to turn that over to Jared to just give you an even quicker update.
We just wanted to keep you abreast as things were progressing with the project. As you may remember, in December, we gave you an update on the project that included a slight delay in our time schedule due to issues with the dam for the stormwater pond and the reclaimed water line with the town of Cary. After working through those, we went back through our cemental process for site plan reviews, and as of today, our site plans were approved, so we have town approval for that to move forward. We are still awaiting our stormwater and erosion control permits from DNR. We turned that package in in December, or excuse me, November, and still waiting on that final permit. We have verbal approval from DNR, but we're just waiting on the paperwork. So from here, we'll be working on our bid package, planning to advertise and take bids for that project in March, and then we'll be coming back to council as long as we have a sound bid that we can recommend. We'll be coming back to council in April at this point, we expect, with a recommendation and contract. If we get the contract signed and notice to proceed issued, quite possibly, we'd see groundbreaking in May.
All right. Thank you.
So obviously, our goal is to keep that project moving. Just one note that I just sort of wanted to make sure you also recalled from the December presentation is our projected cost for that project has gone rather significantly since when it was originally envisioned, and we haven't gotten any feedback that that's a concern to council, but we really, and I think we've talked about this before, we don't want to go out to bid if you're not comfortable with pursuing a project of a larger dollar amount than we had originally talked about. We do know that we have available PIL even for that increased cost of that project that we estimate. It just does limit other future options. We just want to make sure that you still, we expect to proceed with the bid, but just wanted to raise that, so if you wanted to talk about that, you could do that while we're preparing the bid documents.
Anything else, Martha, the staff?
I'm done.
You're done? Okay. Vicky, do you want to start? Any comments?
I only have one question.
Okay.
For our town manager, related to the special census. I noticed that we are currently posting advertisements related to census workers, and there is something about recruitment starting February 9th, so I was wondering, do we have a need for further advertisements, or do we have the number that we need to start the process?
We are continuing to advertise. We had enough applicants that Julie was very busy running around yesterday. They are on-site. They've started testing, but no, we need as many more applicants as we can get so they have as many to pick from, so please continue to spread that word.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. TJ?
Sure. I had an opportunity, I was in Chapel Hill, and I was able to stop by Southern Village in Chapel Hill. It's a really cool development. It's got a nice little town core, so I encourage people to check that out online, southernvillage.com, or take a visit and see if it's something that can inform our town core as we move forward on that, because I like to keep us thinking about how we can make that a really successful project. Thank you.
Thanks. Chris?
I'll be quick. I have another client that I represent, a town, another town in Halifax County that meets the first Monday of every month, so now every week of the month, I'll have a meeting of some sort. So the first Monday of every month for me is out for anything that we might do.
This is in addition to Enfield? Can you tell us what town it is?
Oh, yeah, it's Littleton. I'm sure you've heard of it.
I have, yes.
It's even smaller than Enfield.
Yeah. Okay. Very nice. Very nice, very nice.
That's all I've got.
I'm sure they appreciate it up there. All right. Who's, who would like to go next? Mr. Al?
You go first.
We're all so polite up here. Go ahead, Michael.
I sent that thing out for the lunch in the TTC, Triangle Community Coalition. And that's a great one, and so I just passed it along. I thought the best practices for planning were great. I noticed, and for staff, it's, I, over at the Louis Stevens side, that dirt road, somebody got their car stuck there. It seems like this is probably the sixth time I've seen there, seen it stuck, that section of Wake County road that they don't maintain. And I know on the one side, that's near, the other side, near the proposed Northwest Park, there's a road closed sign. Could we, would it be possible to get somebody to put one on both ends of that little segment? You don't have to answer me now. I just throw it out there because people periodically get stuck there. And then, kind of along on the same note, I was looking at Cotton Place. There's this, and there are gaps all through town, like the one we're, I think we're experiencing at Cotton Place, where they're required to build it out, they're adding that extra lane on their side of the road, and then, and then, and then it goes back to two lane for about 50 feet, and then we come up to the intersection with the 54. So I'm, if, I don't know if it's worth our while to kind of look at those and see if there's maybe some way we can, there's probably three or four other ones that I noticed through town. It's kind of like Mooresville Carpenter, where, where it goes from two lanes to one lane. If we just fix that small segment, wouldn't that really help the traffic flow around town? The other one I think of is down 54, as you're going towards Airport, where we just, we're putting in the new storage facility. Same difference there, that right-hand turn lane. There's about 30 feet there where it's not connected, but would probably help out at that light. And so that's it. Thank you.
Michael, just to comment, I believe that's going to be part of the transportation sidewalk prioritization effort that we go through if that's, is that part of that process? That you're going to look at these orphaned roadway sections? That might be a, pretty small, but...
You're correct. Staff has talked internally as, as we grapple with what our money can buy. Is that a better option for just road improvements rather than major road projects? So you're right, we're going to be bringing you back information on those types of things.
Okay. Liz, would you like to go next?
I will go. I just have one thing real quick. I know I had sent the council last week an email about the opportunity I had to go down to the state legislature and speak at a press conference with some of our representatives and senators here in North Carolina on sponsoring a bill for independent redistricting. And anyhow, it was a great honor to be able to speak at the press conference, but I wanted everyone to know that one bill at least has been submitted, House Bill 49 has been submitted. And our representative, Adcock, has sponsored, co-sponsored the bill. So we'll see if, if independent redistricting happens or not. And it's probably not going to be the only bill, because at the press conference, I found out there's a second bill that is in the works too. So, so that's good. At least, hopefully, that means there are more than just a handful of folks at the state legislature that are looking at that issue and want to be a part of it.
Okay. And Steve?
Excuse me. First of all, I want to thank the mayor for his assistance of Mrs. Wen last week, like for leading by example. And I attended the redistricting. Mayor Portman Johnson spoke well, and I think it's a good, a great bill to move forward. I'm going to thank Chief Wright for a great fire banquet, and congratulate all the cert winners and ribbon winners and all, just such a spectacular evening, so thank you. And the final thing is, I attended the emerging issues forum on my own, and I actually ran into Tim and Ben there. And it was the whole theme, it's led by Governor Hunt, and it was on innovation and entrepreneurship. And what was interesting is a lot of local governments were there, so pretty much most of the county council, Wake County commissioners were there. And I think just tremendous focus on some of the things we've been talking about, open data and innovation. And just last week, before Carlotta left, we were notified that Dignified Therapeutics, which is one of the companies that went through the Hatties program, got a $3 million round of funding. So I don't think there's any companies that have come out of an incubation program so early on. So I think we need to continue to look at these efforts as we brand the town and, you know, look at some of the things we're, we're working on. So, yeah, but thanks for, Tim and Ben for attending, and hope you learned something as well.
Is there another Hatties program about to launch?
Um, yeah, they're in the middle of, um, looking at the, it's going to launch this spring. They're going to do it at the Mooresville Chamber.
Okay.
Yeah, so it'll be this year.
Okay. Well, thank you. I just have a couple of quick updates. We finally have a date for what was rescheduled meeting back in December 3rd. It was about Lake Crabtree, the trails, and RDU, and kind of the future of that. That's been officially rescheduled for March the 3rd from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here at Town Hall. Area officials, elected officials, and staff will be invited. I encourage the Mooresville Town Council to attend that. And we're really labeling it as a conversation on the future of the Lake Crabtree Trails.
What time was that again?
Six o'clock, six to eight o'clock. That's a Tuesday night, March the 3rd, right here at Town Hall. And there'll be plenty of information out there about that. The second item is sad to report that I was on the board of Kaleidoscope Arts and Technology Charter High School. We recently submitted to the state for, to get a ability to do a charter high school here in Mooresville, and we were turned down. We made it farther than we did last time. It's an incredibly competitive process. It wasn't from lack of need. It was, I think it's just, there are a lot of people out there trying to start high schools around the state, and there are very limited numbers that they can do. The board met last night briefly to talk about the future, and I don't think any decisions have been made, but there's, there was definitely a lot of public support from the parents wanting to, they couldn't wait for us to open. So I know the needs out there, I know the desires out there, but it's just kind of getting through the bureaucracy or going down the, kind of the private road is another option. So more to come on that, but I wanted to report that Kaleidoscope Arts and Technology Charter High School did not make it through to the next round. And hopefully, we'll see some other schools here in Mooresville besides that one in the future. All right. Any other questions, comments?
Just one final question, and just want to know whether at some time we can be updated on the Veterans Memorial Park and...
I think that's part of the CIP.
That's part of the CIP. Okay. That's all I want to know. Thank you.
All right. And, okay. We have public address. Do you have any speakers signed up? You do? Okay. Nicole, would you like to come up and talk to us for three minutes?
I'm the only person tonight. Cool. So my name is Nicole Tolby. I reside at 109 Indian Overlook Court in the Downing Glen subdivision. So I'm here to offer a very big thank you to Jim, Blake, and their staffs in the Public Works Department. I'd also like to thank Tony for empowering them to think outside the box and consider a solution without constraints. So what am I thanking them for? Well, I'm thanking them for the pedestrian crossing at the intersection of Downing Glen Drive and Town Hall Drive. As we all know, this intersection is large. It's not all that easy to cross. And the pedestrian crossing signal that is now there lights up with yellow flashing lights when someone pushes the button because they want to cross the street. And boy, is it cool. And I'm happy to report that since that signal has gone in, every single car stops at that intersection now. So it's actually a really nice thing. So again, a big thank you to you guys. You did a lot of work for us. It took several years to get it in place, but it's made a big difference. So that's it.
Thank you. If I could just add to that, Nicole, Chief Jones talks often about these pedestrian crossings and who has the right of way, so to speak. I think he made it quite clear that it's, it's a two-way responsibility. The pedestrians actually need to make sure it's clear, no matter how many lights are flashing, no matter how, you know, beautiful the walkway is, they have to make sure that the traffic is stopped before they proceed. So congratulations on that, and thank you for, the staff for helping out with that. No other public comments? Okay. It's 7:30. We'll continue here. Action items. There are a number of items that are going to be briefed tonight that are more administrative in nature and that we've asked for action tonight. Instead of doing a motion to suspend on every one of these, I'd like to, I talked to the town attorney, and he said it was appropriate if we had a motion at the beginning to kind of cover all of these. I think you'll find them pretty administrative in nature. If there's one in particular that you need to have more time on, or you'd like to delay, we can certainly talk about that. But before we start the action items, if I could have a general motion to suspend the rules for the items that were to be briefed and voted on at the same time, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to suspend the rules for action items. Do you want me to list them out? Would that be helpful?
Sure.
Action items 2015-014, 2015-009, 2015-019, 2015-020, and 2015-018.
A motion and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So now, let's start. Chief Jones, appreciate you coming up. This is 2015-014, approve resolution, adopting memorandum of understanding for traffic incident management. Turn it over to you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm going to yield the mic over to District 5 engineer, Battle Whitley, and he'll explain the inner agency memorandum of understanding and think, he'll do a much better job.
All right.
Well, that was short, sweet, and to the point. Thanks, Chief. First of all, I want to thank Chief Jones for co-chairing the committee that actually helped bring this memorandum of understanding together. So he was a great help, and I appreciate all of his leadership efforts. This MOU, I'm also like a kid now on Christmas because this is something that DOT has been working on for several years, and we're finally getting to a point where we can formalize some things with our incident management program. But this grew out of a CAMPO initiative, Capital Area MPO initiative, to improve our overall incident management efforts throughout the Triangle region. And each year, the Federal Highway Administration sits down with us at DOT, and we do a self-assessment and have to go through several items to evaluate where we are with our program. And for several years now, we have been graded very low on one item, and that has been our, we don't have any formalized documents with first response agencies that we deal with on a daily basis, with the exception of the State Highway Patrol. We have a couple of different MOUs or MOAs with the State Highway Patrol. So CAMPO decided, or worked together to create an initiative back in November 2012 to help us work on fixing that issue, as well as improving responder safety, educating the public to reduce crashes, as well as reduce congestion related to incidents. We also wanted to educate the public on our moveover and fender bender laws. We had just improving traffic flow throughout the region. That, that's the overall goal, as well as improving safety. So we got a group together, did an incident management summit back in August of 2013, brought in first response agencies, towing companies, as well as DOT transportation folks from throughout the CAMPO region. And we went through several issues that relate to us, as well as the nation, on incident management. And from that, we got a small group together that was willing to try and help us move forward. Again, like I said, Chief Jones was one of our co-chairs. The group was also, the other co-chair was Chief Haraway from Apex Fire Department. And we worked through this, and now we have a memorandum of understanding that CAMPO gave its, I guess you would say, blessing to move forward with getting our local response agencies to sign on with DOT on how we will react, how we will work together to reduce incident, incident congestion. Just for example, a 30-minute incident, just a little fender bender, and it takes 30 minutes for an officer to get there, review, and then clear everything up, can, can result in as much as 150 minutes of impacts to traffic. So anytime we can reduce that, every one minute of an incident duration, traffic is going to be impacted by as many as four minutes. So anything we can do to reduce that is going to go a long way to helping us in our region with, with mobility, with economic impacts, and with safety. So really, all this is, again, is a common statement that our groups want to work together, and how they will work together, what each of them's responsibilities will be at the, at a, at a crash scene or an incident scene. And it shows that we have a common purpose in supporting the quick clearance law that was enacted by the General Assembly about five, six years ago, maybe even more. And delighted to say that Mooresville is not only the first municipality to bring this up and hopefully approve for us to sign in the region, but also throughout the state. This is the first MOU that we've put together in DOT that I know of that's already, that's getting down to working with all of our local first response agencies. So I'm delighted that we're finally getting to this point. Like I said, I feel like it's like Christmas, having worked with incident management for over 20 years. So any questions? Be glad to, I can talk about incident management for several hours, and the chief would have to drag me out here, but...
We'll, we'll take you up on that another night. But right now, let's, any questions?
No, I'm happy to help.
Sounds good.
Okay. Good deal. All right. Any other words up there? Thank you. Appreciate it. I know this has been in the works for a lot, a lot of years, and it's, it's not easy when you have something on 40 happen and who does what, when. And having been in the middle of a lot of those stoppages, it's nice to see something happening for it. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any further comments up here? Okay. Need to have a motion to approve?
So move, my move that we approve, item 2015-14.
Second.
A motion and second. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries 7-0. Next up, 2015-009. This is the Wake Tech annexation between Watkins Road and Paramount Parkway. There are actually two, two things we need to vote on tonight.
Correct.
One is a resolution, 2015-009A, to direct the town clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition. And the next one is a resolution, dash, 009B, to set the public hearing date for February 24th. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Turn it over to Rodney.
Really quickly, it's a typical annexation. It's a voluntary annexation submitted by Wake Tech. It is a total of...
A little over 66 acres, three properties.
Generally located Watkins and Paramount. And again, the request is to, there's two actions, resolution 09 directing the sufficiency of the petition and then establishing or setting the public hearing date. That then allows me to go ahead and run the newspaper advertisement as per, per the required law. I can certainly answer any questions. But again, it's a typical annexation.
If you could, I could zoom out a little bit to give us a little better perspective on, on the properties there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
This is Time Warner Cable building right here. My hand, this is Lenovo right here. And here's Watkins, and 54 is off to the west a little bit.
And is there, is the area they're going to develop, I know it's obviously goes to our left here, how much of the rest of the property between there and Paramount is theirs? Is all of this Wake Tech from, from this to the right until we hit a road?
No. This is the PPD buildings. That's a Duke property. The rest of these down are Duke properties, all the way right through here. These properties to the south are individual property owners. Wake Tech does... property owners. Wake Tech does own this piece right here. It's already had annexed. It's already within our corporate limits, as well as Wake Tech owns this piece here, and then another piece that immediately is at the intersection of 54 and Watkins.
Okay. All right. Are any questions? Watkins here?
The property we're bringing in, none of it is taxable to us, right?
Correct. It'd be exempt.
Okay.
Is this the end of their property now, Rodney? This is all that's left to be annexed in?
It is, correct, of theirs. There's a couple of little outliers right here that are owned by individual property owners.
By, I meant by Wake Tech. Yeah, this is the end.
Okay. All right. So no other questions? We need to have a motion. I've listed one at a time. Excuse me. First of all, the resolution 2015-009A to direct the town clerk to investigate the sufficiency of the petition.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That covers Cary, that are 7-0. Next one is resolution 2015-009B to set the public hearing date for the 24th of February.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so that's set. Any other questions or comments before Rodney goes off? That's it. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next up is 2015-019, approved resolution appointing finance officer. This is also one of the items we wanted to vote on tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. State statutes require the official designation of a finance officer. Julia has been our finance officer, and several months ago, we appointed Allison Paco, our deputy finance officer. Just as Julie is working on her non-financial things for me, this is just a temporary recommendation to appoint the town manager as the finance officer and keep Allison as the deputy finance officer. In general, we're responsible for making sure all the financial stuff is done right.
Okay. Any questions for the town manager? Okay, need a motion and a second?
Motion to approve 2015-019.
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 7-0. Next up is 2015-020, approve resolution authorizing electronic signatures.
A number of years ago, council authorized us to use electronic signatures rather than signing every individual check. We use that for our accounts payable and payroll. The authorized signatories are by title, and so we're recommending that in addition to the town manager and the finance officer, we put the controller and the assistant town manager. And there will always be two signatures on every check, and all of the necessary controls are in place to secure those signature plates.
Okay. Any questions for the town manager? Okay. Need a motion and a second, please?
Move that we adopt 2015-020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries 7-0. Next, the final action item for tonight is before our break, is 2015-018. This is to approve resolution supporting the 2015 legislative agenda. Turn it over to Mr. Goss.
Good evening. Good to be here. This item is to, as the mayor indicated, to adopt the 2015 legislative agenda for the town. You'll recall that on the 13th of January, the manager gave a very good background presentation on the, kind of, ABCs of legislative process in North Carolina. Last meeting on the 27th, you all discussed some possible options, including the, the major items from the 2014 legislative agenda, plus some other items, particularly a couple of local bills. The, the items tonight that are in the, the recommended packet are, include revising privilege license. And the emphasis, though, this year, instead of trying to prevent the repeal of the privilege license, it's more to encourage the governor and the legislature to pursue alternative revenue sources to kind of be able to hold the, the local governments harmless in terms of the, the potential fiscal impact related to the removal of the privilege license. Second of all, it's the zoning design and aesthetic controls. This is the same bill that was in your agenda last year. It's been, it is before the, both the House and Senate bill versions of it. Again, either oppose the bill or certainly to, there'll be some, likely some more discussions of this bill and possible some removal of more onerous provisions in that bill may be a way to approach that. Third is the historic tax credits. This is, again, the same as your item last year, and you'll recall that on January 1st, the bill did expire. There was no action to extend the bill last year in the legislature. There seemed to be some popular movement to support this reenactment of this bill this year. So I think that seemed to have, possibly have some traction this year as well. The other option that was discussed at some length was possibly exploring a local bill, particularly with regard to assessing payment and lieu or actually recreation, requiring of lands for recreation or payment and lieu option similar to other subdivisions, but had this applied to multifamily. And this would be, the idea was to be based this on local bills similar to what was adopted in Cary in 2007. So those are, those are in the bill. And I think the wording in the briefing sheet was to either include that local bill or to allow staff to come back and do more of a search to see what town Cary's experience has been and report back to you, or perhaps talk with planning and figure out what kind of real impact that might have on the local community in terms of how much potential multifamily land there might be realized that we could make this assessment up. Just for information, since we've talked, and this is, of course, very much a changing day-to-day atmosphere, a lot of other legislation is finding its way to the floor of the legislature. I think it was mentioned last time about the governor's statewide transportation bond. That's, I believe, a possibility still. And one of the items that may be of concern to Morrisville and other local governments is to make sure that some type of local access is, provision is provided for that bond. So it's not just, say, for rural areas or at the discretion of, of the state. There is a, I read recently about the proposal to cut the gas taxed by 2.5 cents per gallon. This could obviously have an effect statewide on the amount of revenue generated for transportation purposes. There is a bill, I think, again, these are just in the last couple of days, to further restrict use of eminent domain. And I'm, and I believe the emphasis is on to assure or more, more restrictively define what is a public purpose for which eminent domain could be practiced. The fourth item is, as was discussed earlier, and which Mayor Pro Tim Johnson made a statement at the press conference, is the independent redistricting commission. There are two bills, House Bill 49 and Senate Bill 28. I don't know what the, the possibilities are for adoption in this session, but it is certainly that it's a good thing to, for the state, as well as local governments to consider. Finally, is the elimination of the extraterritorial jurisdiction, or ETJ, is on the table, and that would be something that you might want to consider in opposition. There, of course, we're, we're pretty much hemmed in, and so that's mostly oriented towards communities who want to exert their planning and zoning authority beyond their corporate limits. And we have, most of our potentially annexable areas is within the area of donuts within our corporate limits. So I'd be glad to address any questions you might have, or certainly, I think, your town attorney, or Councilmember Gardner, or Ben, who's been involved in a lot of legislative issues, could certainly, may want to add in, add some other comments as well.
Okay. I'll, I have a comment, but I'll save it here. Open it up for anyone? What I, Tim, I was gonna ask you about the, the local bill option. If we, the way the resolution is written, you're really talking about, highlighting the three from last year, correct?
Yes, sir.
And the fourth item is something that the staff would still need to work on. I know at the, I was able to have a couple of minutes with our local representative at the chamber meeting the other day, and she was, she was, oh, if you want a local bill, just let me know, and we'll, we'll help you write it. We'll help you do it. You know, they do it all the time. Sort of, that was the gist of the conversation. So I wanted to make sure that if, if the council votes on that as an option, that you engage our local representatives, Gil Adcock in particular, who, who's had the experience through Cary, and get her input on the best way to move that forward. So I kind of put that in.
I'd be glad to do that, and it's a very good point. I, I neglected to mention that I've attached in your material, this suggested approach or strategy to how to, how to perhaps approach the legislature on this. And certainly, if this is an item that you would like to pursue, then I'd be glad to work with Representative Adala or the, or Representative Adcock or Senator Stein, certainly as our key local legislators.
Okay. Yeah, I'd be in favor of that. I got a copy of the bill that, oh, you just have to change the name, of Cary to Morrisville.
And that, a copy of your bill is, is in your materials as well.
And again, tonight is not voting on anything in particular with that local bill. It's simply giving staff the ability to move forward with continued research. And I would just say, if they're in session, things are happening, so time is kind of of the essence right now on that. So it's...
Yeah, the materials also have, identified some deadlines, which Town Attorney was very good about helping me out with. And I guess February is the meeting, a possible meeting with the Wake County delegation, where the mayors typically present the agendas of the towns. There are some legislative deadlines approaching, submitting a bill to bill drafting, I think, is the House bill is March 3rd, and the Senate is March 11th. So that kind of kicks off the process. So we, we have roughly three or four weeks or so to get something in the hopper, I guess.
Okay. All right.
I'm in favor of moving forward with this, keeping in, in mind that if there's something else that sort of pops up, like we've got an email today about the gas tax, that would be something that we could address separately and have, sort of add that as something that we feel is important later and speak as a town, as a group. But I think going forward, what we have here is important that we do that.
Yeah.
The, the bill to limit municipalities zoning authority in the extraterritorial jurisdiction, I haven't studied it, but I was surprised to see that. Maybe I shouldn't have been, but I would sort of punt it back to staff. I mean, I, I would, I would not support that bill, but I haven't, I know a little bit about our, our pockets, but what would the impact to Morrisville look like?
About 12% occupancy. So we have land that's in our incorporated limits, and then we have extraterritorial jurisdiction where we also exercise planning and zoning authority. And about 12% of the total area that we exercise planning and zoning authority is in these, is in this ETJ area. What that enables us to do is have a continuous regulatory framework. These are lands that are all supposed to be annexed into the town over time. Often, property owners use it, use the ETJ status, unincorporated ETJ status, as a temporary tax shelter until the land is ready to be developed, yet they are able to pre-market it because it's already correctly, it's already got town zoning. It doesn't have like a lower designation from county zoning, so they can pre-market it. And then when a property's ready to be developed and needs water and sewer service, then they apply for voluntary annexation. So I would think developers would be concerned about this who have, who have property or are interested in property that's either within these donut holes that Tim referenced or immediately on the periphery of the town. They might be forced to deal with two different jurisdictions if they have property that actually overlaps the boundary. Say they put together an assemblage that has land in the town and land just outside the town, now they've got to work with two different entities in order to get the property approved for whatever development they want to do. So, but I, I think that where this is, a big question on this bill, House Bill 51, is, is this something that is just an issue for a few legislators, or does this have broader support? And that is not clear. So that's, I think, a key early thing to figure out, is whether this is something that potentially has legs. Right now, it only has three sponsors, so it's not clear.
And to TJ's point, I do think this is something we have to be fluid about because next week, there may be something else that's introduced. So I guess I don't know, that really worries me. I think the intent at the legislature are, are to address the traditional ETJ folks who are outside the perfect circle and perhaps not the donut holes like we have. So it really, it gives me concern. I would prefer to have our opposition express in the resolution, but I also understand that there may be other things that we have to address. And so that would be my thought, would be to include that, but that's just my perspective.
I think that might be one of them that's already included in the NCLM goals. So we might sort of, I don't recall if that was one of them that was approved by the NCLM in total. I know it was one of them, a consideration.
Councilmember Colley, I don't recall it. I know I have provided you as a list of the current 2015 advocacy agenda for the league, but I, I read over that before the meeting. I don't recall a specific reference to ETJ.
You know, maybe the way to handle it as an alternative would be if it gets us a committee hearing or something, maybe then we can all agree.
I would say almost anything, and I'm sure there's another half dozen things we haven't even dreamt of that will happen, that will, may have concerns about, that we have the ability to, you know, proactively state our case and everything. So this is not the end. This is simply, I think it's a good document. The way it's written, it gives us the flexibility to do some other things. Doesn't preclude us from pursuing some additional items if we see fit. So, but I think, I'm, I'm happy with the way it is. And I think we're all on board on doing additional items later if needed. So any other questions or comments, Ricky?
I have a question about the timing on the local bill for the multifamily improvements. You mentioned something about March 3rd being a House bill deadline and, and so forth. If we don't really vote on this item until the 24th, is that adequate time to research and, and put forward a local bill? Or do we need to do something tonight to help you proceed with a dialogue?
Well, first of all, I'll take a stab at it, and I'll defer to the town attorney who may know the, the workings of the process better. As Councilmember Schlink mentioned, we've got basically the wording of the bill that has been used before. And so I think the actual drafting of the bill will be pretty simple. I don't think we would need to work that much, but that, they just have those deadlines to accommodate. You know, it goes to the bill drafting, and then it goes to the, have the deadline for actually submittal. So I, I think, obviously, I think by, if, if a vote is deferred till the 24th, I think it'd be adequate time.
I was gonna say, I think the difference is that we're talking about two different things. One is our legislative agenda, which are these three items.
Right.
And secondly, we're doing a local bill.
Right, because I think both were mentioned in here, so I just want to be
Yeah.
clear that we make our goals.
But if we voted on it tonight, it would enable us to present our agenda.
Right.
And then give the staff the ability to, in parallel, work on the local bill, which I would have to present in a couple of weeks.
Okay, so we can do all that tonight?
Yeah. And Frank, is that correct, or?
I agree. I would just say, I think, in my experience, the practice, most legislators like to have a resolution from the town council, asking them to introduce a bill. So they, they understand it's coming from the total council, not one member or whatever. So I think to Councilmember Scrockins-Johnson's point, it would be good to adopt a resolution. I think February 24th would be fine.
Okay, great.
Asking our local delegation to introduce.
So, it's very clear.
The legislation.
And is that, um, so are you advocating waiting for the whole thing till it's moved?
No, just the payment and move for the multifamily.
So, so we have a, a single, uh, resolution with that
Right.
topic, and that'll be more clear for our government body.
Okay. Steve?
Just one, I mean, I think I'm fine with this agenda and moving the process forward. I, I like the idea of us still making the attempt to having, either inviting the Wake delegation here for one of our events, or, um, reaching out to, you know, not only Senator Stein and Representative Adcock, but Nelson Dollar, Marilyn Avila, Senator Behringer. Um, you know, in the past, we've had the Speaker here, when Tom Murray, you know, brought him here to talk about stuff. So, um, you know, I don't know whether we want to, you know, try to do it sooner than the April timeframe when the Civil War thing is. Um, you know, maybe we could do it on a Friday, 'cause Friday usually they, are they in session all day Friday, or? So, maybe we could do like a Friday noon, or, or, you know, late afternoon or so, just something for us to consider, but I want us to try to make that happen if we could.
Alright, so the, um, it sounds like if, what's before us tonight really includes everything. So, if that's not, if we need to break out, the local bill is a separate resolution in two weeks, is that what you're saying, Frank?
Yes, sir.
Remove it from this, have, have the, the top three bullets. That would be a resolution for our legislative agenda. The fourth bullet come off, and it would be a standalone resolution in two weeks.
Can you put that up on the screen? Can you put the res, the resolution we're looking at adopting tonight, can we put that up on the screen so we all know what we're kind of referencing?
I'm sorry, I'm looking over at Liz's, uh, copy of it here.
'Cause there's a bullet in the resolution that refers to a local bill specific to Parkland dedication.
So, I'm saying if we take that out, that last bullet, it might be a standalone resolution in two weeks, when we have more information on it.
Do we feel like it's strengthened by pulling it out, or?
I'm not sure why we necessarily need.
I recommend we pulled it, pulling it out because of clarity and purpose. That way, that single resolution will say, this is what we want, versus, we've got a lot of activity in this, which is fine for the agenda, but a local bill is, is rather significant, um, to request, I think, and.
As a point of clarification, again, lots of town attorney to comment, would there be a problem of holding off on, on the resolution until the second meeting in February and including all four bullets as the town's agenda?
That'd be fine.
So, perhaps that fourth bullet would be a little bit more detailed than, than what is currently there?
We, we can look and, yeah, see if we need more detail.
I, I think it'd almost have to be an attachment or something with this, saying, here it is, you know, here, you know, here's, here's what we're proposing.
Requesting the local delegation to introduce
Right, right.
the attached legislation or something.
Yeah, I, I just want it to be a little more robust.
Not to, not to make matters worse, but, um, if between now and the 24th, you're summoned to the Wake delegation, it would be nice to have something in your hand from council. 'Cause didn't you say that we, that may happen? We have no date yet?
I believe the town attorney indicates that happens sometimes in February, typically.
Yes, but there's nothing firm about it. It just happens, and you do get short notice, though. Yep.
I'd be in favor of just going with what we have here, and if we want to have a more expansive one, more detailed on the 24th.
I agree.
We can just add it on. I don't.
Maybe we do this as a, uh, a placeholder for now, come back in two weeks, and if we, if we need it, we have it. If we don't, then we'll beef it up. Is that okay?
Sure.
Alright. Okay.
So, after all that, that seems that the idea would be to go ahead and adopt the resolution as prepared, and then.
Is that a motion?
That is my mo, I move that we adopt, unless there's any other.
Any other question? Okay, alright, I think we're okay on that.
I move that we adopt Resolution 2015 dash zero one eight.
I'll second that.
A motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, Carrie seven zero. Uh, before we go on to new items, uh, number nine, let's go ahead and take a 10-minute break. We'll, uh, come back at 8:15.
I'm disappointed, 'cause I really want to talk about the item.
It's eight fifteen, we're back in session on to section nine, new items. First one is 2015 dash zero fifteen, consider resolution approving audit contract. So Allison, welcome to the podium.
The Finance Department issued a request for proposal for auditing services on January the second. There were a total of eight proposals submitted for review. The criteria in the RFP was that the proposals be submitted in two sections. The first section was to be compromise of the audit's firm's prior experience and qualifications of its personnel in performing governmental audits. That would qualify them to move forward to the second section of the proposal, which is the cost requirements. On the briefing sheet, it lists the firms that met, that were the top five, that met all the requirements of the RFP. The group unanimous, 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 I'm sorry, agreed to, with the decision to proceed with the contract offer to Cherry Beckett. The group agreed that they were, they best met the town's expectations for experienced audit approach and cost requirements.
Council received a letter from Keith Joyce, who is the partner in charge of our current audit, just expressing concern about our recommendation. I'm happy to answer any of those questions, but in general, I will say, you know, Joyce and Company has audited us, I think Julie said, before she got here, so that's 23 years. We did think it was time to just, you know, explore the market. This was a request for qualifications, which is why it's issued really in two parts. It's not the lowest bidder. We're looking for the best services and with new staff and with some of the things we're trying to improve and work on in the Finance Department, we thought a new and fresh look at our audit would be appropriate at this point. It's not a reflection on Joyce and Company or dissatisfaction with their work, but we do continue to stand by our recommendation to council.
Okay. And this is, we have action on this in two weeks, so it's still time to do some more research and talk about it, but any questions for the town manager at this point?
No.
No. Thank you, good job. All right. Next new item to be briefed is 2015 dash zero one three, consider resolution to update the meeting audio record retention series. Is that you, Ms. Williamson?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Most of our council meetings are recorded. Occasionally, if they're offsite, we won't have a recording, but we would have minutes available for that. The current practice is to dispose of audio records upon adoption of meeting minutes by town council. We would be set to approve January minutes at our February business meeting. So between now and then, I'd like to consider lifting or rescinding a previous resolution 2007 oh one three, which calls for disposing, it actually requires disposing of audios upon approval of the minutes. And what this will do is support our current streaming project and archiving project, which is now on our website, and allow for those to be retained for a period of time. It just lifts the restriction. And so you would be with adoption of resolution 2015 oh one three, you'd be formally rescinding resolution 2007 oh one three, and we did note that that would also include continuing to adhere to the records policy, which council adopted November twenty-six, 2013. That was also by resolution number 2013 oh one eight, so that would still stay in place.
Okay. Any questions for the town clerk about this?
I actually have a couple of questions. When would this be effective? If we vote on this on the 24th, and we are also approving the minutes, would audio recordings from January then be preserved? Or is there other recordings previously that could be preserved as part of this action?
I don't have any other previous recordings available, other than the retreat audio, which I just finished editing out the breaks that should be uploaded either today, by the end of the day today, tomorrow. We actually have the company that we are using as our streaming service provider that will upload that for us.
Okay, so just a point of clarification. It's reasonable to assume then the 2015 year would have all the recordings going forward.
That's the intention.
That's the intent.
And I believe why the manager also had it on the rolling calendar for February.
Okay. And one more question. I think it might be prudent to put a time-bound statement in here for, the recordings will be available for three years or five years. We can revisit if that can be extended as, you know, as a council kind of thing. If we say indefinitely, that's kind of confusing and might need some archive direction. So if we say five years, then it could be archived after five years, depending on how much storage and all that kind of stuff, so.
Councilmember Scruggs Johnson is correct. Our desire was to go ahead and start fresh with January, so actually, the audio has actually been linked into the same streaming software we're streaming with tonight. Ultimately, long-term, we've got better flexibility because the audios are really being stored not on our server, but over time, it will cost us a fee to save more and more and more if you want to consider it time-bound.
Great, thank you. Those are all my comments.
Kristi.
I just want to clarify that the, the records are, they're being retained by the streaming provider? Is that how we're doing it, through the technology? Is it through the provider or is it being stored by us?
It is being done by the provider.
Okay.
So when it streams, automatically uploads and is archived offsite. That is part of the original reason for our resolution from 2007, is we just didn't have the storage space or the electronic means that we have available now.
Diana, two years from now, someone wants to hear tonight's meeting. What would they do?
It would be on that website.
They'd go to a website and pick the date and...
Our current contract with the streaming provider provides for up to, archiving up to three years of audio, and that can, that's just the current contract. That doesn't mean we're only limited to that. It's certainly open for discussion and whatever you desire.
Okay, are those files portable in three years? We'd want to go to another provider, there's another technology out there that's even better? Are they, are they hours to move or...
Assuming we don't set a retention date, we can kind of do what we want with those audios, with direction. Or, I'm sorry, a disposition date.
As a follow-up to that, like, what if we moved from this one vendor, and then a few years from now, we have to go back and whether we or someone else wants to go, how would, how would we get access to those records?
Well, it was my understanding that we would have access to those, that those are our records. They're only storing them for us, it's our data.
So if we moved to another provider, we could take them with us and...
I would, I would need to verify, but I would assume so.
I agree with Diana, that's my understanding, but I do think it would be prudent for us to check before you vote on this next meeting.
If you could, that'd be...
So we have some consideration, maybe putting a time limit on it and maybe just find out more about the portability of our files through different vendors.
Yeah, because this was my concern too, the retention and how long we're going to keep these for, but, so I understand, because I went out there, you can, you can find the recordings now from the retreat out there, so when folks go, we'll just keep adding to that list, so for three years, we'll see three years' worth of audios, the way we have it through the contract today, out there off our website. Okay, okay. And I think what would help me is to know if there's some kind of standard out there for what other municipalities are doing and how long they keep their audio for. Do they keep for three years, five years, 10 years? Is there...
The ones that are utilizing this practice or just in general?
Whoever is doing audio archival, are they, what, what, I'd just like to know if there's, what others are doing.
They're just retaining them, I can find out how long they're keeping them for, if you like.
That's what I mean. I would like to know how long other, yeah, Wake County, Raleigh, Cary, any, how long people keep them for.
There's only one other town that I'm aware of, and I'll verify, but that has an actual resolution in place to dispose of audio records after a certain amount of time, and that's the town of Cary, and theirs was three years.
And I can envision a year from now, we're going to have another similar conversation about video.
Possibly.
So, stay tuned for that. Okay, so we have a couple of weeks to think about, get some answers. Anything else for Diana? Okay. Thank you, Diana. Last new item to be briefed on tonight is 2015 dash zero one six, consider appointments to advisory committees to fill available seats. But also Diana? Okay.
We did just complete a biannual outreach for applications to fill seats and just generate community interest in serving on the advisory committees. That includes the Mooresville connection, email blasts, and social media outreach. We did get several applicants, you will find them listed on your briefing sheet. The applicants are specific to the Community of Parents Committee. We received one applicant, there are seven available seats. We received four, three applicants, and there's four open seats. The Performance Measures Assessment Committee has one open seat, and there is one applicant. I did make a note on there that the current applicant is current, is serving on the planning zoning board. The Public Safety Advisory Committee had several applicants, seven, with four available seats. Something I did not note, and I meant to add per request of the manager, was that the ballot was added as a option for council. There is always the option of doing a verbal affirmation as well, so I just wanted to clarify that. And then the Rain Stormwater Committee has four open seats and one applicant. Council is not obligated to appoint anyone. Applicants are chosen based on how likely they are best fit for committee. So you have the option of appointing or not appointing, and what would happen is the members that are appointed would be added to the resolution that would be adopted.
Okay, so it looks like there's just one committee where we have to pare down the list.
Correct.
From the applicants, but you're saying on any of these applicants, it's optional whether or not they're appointed.
Correct.
Which is probably always the case.
Yes, sir.
So, okay, and we would take action on this in two weeks?
Correct.
All right. Any questions? I had one question, I'll hold off.
I'm not sure, I think Vicky may have a question.
Last time that we had our six-month update, I was wondering if you have had a chance to look at the attendance records, and these numbers are current with the, the current members are all within the attendance policy?
I can verify that. We aren't doing any reappointments this time, these are all new applicants, and that's why there's not in a list of attendance, but if you'd like an attendance update, I can get that provided to you and report.
Yes. That would be very helpful, because in some of the committees that are more full, there might be some members that are out of policy or have special considerations, and I want to encourage as much participation as we can.
I don't think that that's in the existing situation right now.
Okay, well, it's worth...
It's worth taking a look at it.
Yeah, if you can...
But I'll get a report.
Let's verify that, because that's true. If it opens up a seat for, for one of these more needed committees, then we can, we can look at that, so.
There was also one member, one applicant that was not a resident of Mooresville.
Okay.
And I'm sure Liz is looking at me like that was her question. So Liz, do you want to go ahead?
Go ahead, Liz.
No, well, I...
You had the particular name and...
Yeah, it's, it's a gentleman named Richard Fine, and I mean, he even says in his application that he doesn't live in the town of Mooresville, so this application should not even be in this pack. And so before we all start making phone calls, because I think a lot of us like to do that, I think we decided just two months ago that we were only going to look at residents, so he even uses his business address in his application.
Right, with that said, all these meetings are public, and we encourage, you know, everyone to attend that's interested. They wouldn't be members of the, you know, the specific board for voting purposes, but they're certainly welcome to participate as, you know, members of the public.
Diana, I guess if you could catch, as soon as you can update Mr. Fine on his application, let him know. Good, good points there, okay. Any other questions or comments? Again, we're going to look at this again in two weeks, so if you haven't done so already, really look at this list, particularly the ones where we have to have a ballot, and be prepared in two weeks to come in and make some decisions, so. Anything else, Diana? All right, very good, thank you. All right, next section is number 10, this is items with no update. 2015 dash zero zero three, consider ordinance approving annexation 14 oh three, 14 oh four, rather, located at 3025 Carriage Mill Boulevard. Where's Rodney? Is he gone? Diana, look at you. Still no updates? Okay. All right. We're going to visit this yet again in two weeks. Any comments or questions at this point? Okay. All right, let's move on to our work session. Tonight, we're going to talk about solid waste. Hopefully, we've had a chance to look at the documentation online, and I'll turn it over to Tony for the briefing, or not the briefing, but the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Let's talk some trash.
That's good.
Say trashy, I said trash. Okay, discussion tonight is really centered around, yeah, one main theme, and that is there's been some discussion at the council, back to the staff, of how we want to fund the solid waste program. And we met with you individually, we've kind of gone over some things with you, and we're going to kind of review that tonight a little bit. But what we're looking for is direction, the sooner the better. If we could get it by the first of March, that would be super, on the direction you want to go with funding the program. This will be our solid waste recycling and yard waste pickup service that we offer. So I'm going to go over a couple of things tonight, just a quick review on a couple of items that we talked about, and then we'll, I'll kind of move into it. Just a quick overview of the program, it includes solid waste recycling and yard waste. We do use a contract hauler. The, our costs for the, for FY15 are budgeted at just a tad over a million dollars, represents about three cents on the, on the valuation. And the current monthly charge, if you equate it back to a charge to the resident, would be about $16.42. The lower part of the slide, I just wanted to include the, kind of the pricing history, if you will, over the last five years. We started out in 2010, we finished up a contract period there, and, and so we've gone from 1450 up to the current 1642 in this previous five years. Just a little bit about the distribution of how these, how the cost increases went. About 57% of those were due to just growth, more people moving into town, and it cost us more money there. And then the other part is the 43% of the cost, which averages about 4.4% a year, is basically CPI. This is a charge that we allow in the contract, there's a specific part of the CPI designated for solid waste hauling in our, our part of the country, and that's used to help offset some of the, the cost increases that the contractor comes into. So that's just a, just a quick overview. We presented this information to you previously at our individual meetings, but I'll stop there. Has anybody got a question about anything or... Okay. We'll get into the funding strategies a little bit, and it really boils down into three basic strategies for consideration. Our general fund, which is what we're using today to fund the program, some type of user fee that is passed on to the, the actual users, or an outsource. And under the outsourcing, I've listed a couple of ideas or a couple of opportunities here that we could use to do that. I'm going to start with the, the last one first, because if you consider or give us direction to go to either of these two, then that will impact what we do in July, because we most likely need to extend our current contract to give us sufficient time to work over all the details that would be required, either for the franchising option or a merger option, you know, merging it out. So I want to cover those two first and kind of get those out of the way, but that, that would be the, the situation that we'd be facing for this, this upcoming time. And extending the contract is not an issue, I mean, we, you have the authority to do that. Okay, so just a couple of quick benefits, potentially eliminates a large part of our solid waste expenses, where basically, when you're going to franchise this program out, you're just taking the program and giving the whole thing to somebody else, and they're going to handle the entire program for you. Typically, when you do this, you franchise out both your residential and your commercial, and as you're aware, we don't collect commercial waste now. And there are some operational considerations that we'd have to go through with franchising, that part of the law would require us to wait, if we were to franchise the entire system, until somebody who had a commercial hauler or had a contract hauler, that contract would have to, to be terminated, and then once it was terminated, they'd fall under our franchise thing. So there's a lot of moving parts to it, and that's why I'm saying this, we would not be able to put this in place between now and July. It would take us another year to, to get that out of the way. But again, this, the franchisee would be billing the customers, they would be taking care of all of that, that part of it. So that would free up some additional capital in the general fund for repurposing. And of course, if we do that, it takes the pressure off the tax rate. Some of the challenges that we kind of identified with that would be an increased potential for quality control loss. Again, we'd have to work into our franchise agreement and maybe put in some quality control things there, but it wouldn't be our program in terms of, of daily operations. Could increase the, the program costs, invoicing and collection, and returning this over to somebody else to do, and, and they're going to be handling that aspect for you. Maybe some frustration with our, with our customers on now having to deal totally with somebody else and working on it out of it. And then some uncertainties with our time, it's, it's new for us, we haven't franchised anything before. So it's a possibility, but it's going to take, there's a learning curve for us, as well as an implementation curve in that, in that part of it. Mergers or operations.
Tony, before you go on, back to the franchise for a second, just to be clear, on the, if I'm, I'm a commercial person and I hire, I already have, you know, Tony's trash service that does mine, because, you know, I've got this third party that already does mine, trash. Are you saying that I would have to start using the town's franchise service?
I'm going to kind of yield a frank, we, we...
Was that an option?
The way that would work is if you included the commercial pickup in the franchise. Once your contract was ended with your vendor, then you would come into our franchise program.
So why, why would we include something that was never a part of us to begin with?
Economies of scale is, is one major reason. And again, some more legwork here, but I don't know if we're required to do the commercial and the residential, or if we could float them out and have, and let the commercial stay, stay on the same. But we can, we will certainly find out.
Yeah, maybe it's, it's, it'd be just interesting to know if it's a requirement or an option, or how that, how that works. Chris, do you have some...
How long are the franchise terms?
Minimum's 10 years.
Okay.
10 years.
What were the, are they normally just 10 years?
They can range from 10 to 20 years.
Okay.
I mean, they can, there's all variations of it.
Then, and if you're looking, is there an example of somebody doing that around here and I...
There is a, a franchise agreement with a county, that a county has, should have written it down, I don't think it was Northampton County, is it Northampton? Yeah, it's contract, oh, it's contract, okay.
Is it like a, and when you say franchise, so would the town recoup a franchise? Is it like a, and when you say franchise, so would the town recoup a franchise fee? Because it's our franchise. Just like with Time Warner or something like that?
I'm going to have to do some more research on that because I'm not sure how that, that works. Another idea of outsourcing would be merger. If there was another, another municipality that was interested in our program, you could elect to merge the program with them. And then that would just basically like your water and sewer that you do now. Merge our whole program with another municipality. There are two in the area that are the closest to us, but that's something to consider. And, and some of the benefits are, again, the same. We can repurpose the funding that's used. We would still have some funds, need to budget funds for Town of Marsfield waste. We have certain dumpsters in our parks and places like that. So it wouldn't be a, a total wash. That's about, that runs about $16,000, $18,000 a year. It's not, it's not a large, large expense. But certainly if we merge this and take it completely out, off of town's operations, then it reduces a lot of staff time and, and program costs and so forth. But some of the disadvantages are, we now put the rate, the rate that would be charged would be solely calculated by the, the other person that was, that we merged the, the services with. So you, our council wouldn't have any say-so in the rate of what that, that fee would be. Another issue with merging is that if that, if another municipality did this and their fee was not 100% cost recovery, then somebody has to pay that difference. And, and I'm sure they would be looking for the town to make up whatever difference that is between what their rate is and what the, what the 100% cost recovery. Or they would charge our, our folks a higher fee potentially. But they'd want to recover that. Does that make sense?
Just like with water sewer.
Yeah.
And then the one, just for, has any town around here done that?
Not in, not, not locally, no.
How long would this term typically be?
A merger?
Indefinite.
Indefinite. I mean, it would be forever. You would just do it. And I'm sure, I mean, I, I, we can write anything. Getting the people to agree with it is, is something else. But typically it would be in perpetuity.
And they would get their bill from that other?
Yes, yes.
How, how does, how does Cary bill for their trash?
It's billed through the water, through their water billing system.
So if you're a Cary resident, you get a water bill, water sewer and trash?
It's all taxed on the same, right? It's all on the same bill. And, and I'll cover that in the billing aspect of it too. So because that's not a part of this.
And just to, the obvious question is, has, have we talked to the municipalities that we would partner with about this general idea to see if they're?
We've had some general conversations with one in particular, their closest neighbor. And, you know, there's some interest, but I wouldn't say, we haven't had a detailed discussion with them to say, are you ready to do this? Again, we, we're not going to go in that direction until we have more direction from the council.
And I guess that would, if I can, that would also be something that would take probably a year or two for them to program.
We would extend our contract, yes.
Yeah.
To work through the details. But we haven't, we haven't gone out informally, sat down with them and said, hey, how would this work in that kind of situation, until we get direction from the council. It's not a, not something we're going to go out and, okay. So moving along, now we move into the user fee category where we're actually, we have a fee. We, our council establishes that fee each year, and it's charged to the residents. Again, some of the benefits shifts that program cost back to the users. Currently, under our tax, under our general fund payment, everybody that pays taxes in Marsfield can kind of contributes to paying the solid waste bill. So there's a subsidy, if you will, from the non-users, non-taxpaying users of about 42, 43% towards that, that, that total bill. Again, if you out, if you establish a user fee, you're now freeing up existing capital that's in the general fund to be repurposed for other, other uses. And also you, with a user fee, you control how much that fee is and how much cost recovery that fee has. So if you want to phase in a user fee, that's certainly your prerogative, and how much of that fee you want to, of the cost that you want to recoup. We would have to develop a revenue collection system. We currently don't have a revenue collection system. As when we merged our water and sewer with Town Cary, we don't, we gave up our billing system basically in our, in our customers. And, and we really don't have a hook to, to ensure that they, they pay their bills. Again, the fee is determined by the, by the percent of cost recovery. And you would be adjusting fees, and, and I said in here annually, but at some point through the process, you would need to occasionally adjust fees to account for inflation. The, is, otherwise we're going to end up underwater with it, and you'll be subsidizing it back out of the general fund. So typically, if you have a user fee periodically, and this, that again is up to the council, you can adjust those fees to cover the, the program costs. And it does shift the cost of the program directly to the users. So some people will like that, some, some may not. And then our current model that, that you all are familiar with, in the general fund, where it's spreading the cost out to all of the, the non-taxpaying users, it does not require any type of collection system, billing system to do that with. And, and our revenue is almost 100% collectible. I mean, our, we have a very high property tax collection rate, which, so that speaks to that aspect of it. Again, non-users are currently subsidizing about 42% of the program in the, in the current model. And as I pointed out earlier, we, we do have inflationary or CPI cost increases. So periodically, there are some adjustments that will be needed to, to cover the increasing cost of the program as it moves along when it's in the tax rate. Now, what we have been doing heretofore is allowing growth to absorb that additional cost. And we've had good growth and, and we haven't had a large issue with that. But as we go out into the future, that's something that the councils would want to, want to pay attention to. Okay. With the user fee, we needed a billing option. So staff has been out trying to look to see what's available for us. We have, we've identified three options. There's really four. I didn't list the fourth one. I'm not really recommending it, but that would be a third-party independent billing company, and there's issues with that. But the three options that we feel like are the ones that council could consider if you wanted to go to adopt the user fee process would be the Wake County Tax Office. They already collect our property taxes. They collect our stormwater fee, and they are more than willing to collect our solid waste fee. It would be a, a one bill, one annual bill. It would be on your tax bill when it comes in, and you just pay it. There's, there's less flexibility to the customer with that. In other words, one of the, one of the other options offers a, a vacation period. If you're going to be gone for more than 30 days and you notify them, they won't charge you a solid waste fee. With the county, we don't have that option. With the county, there's not going to be any prorating. When you go to sell your house, you, you pay the fees. There's no proration of the, of the solid waste fee in, in that aspect of it. So there's a few things in there that would be, that we'll have to educate the public on if you select that, that option. A second option is using the Town Cary as a billing vendor. And we have talked with them formally about this to see if that would be a possibility and what the circumstances be. They are interested in helping us. They've indicated that they thought it's something they could do without any problem. Our program somewhat mirrors their program now anyway, has a few nuances to it, but we would be able to help them with customer service issues. If there was a problem with the utility, they, they could call our folks. We'd still be involved in the, in that, that part of, of the program. As I said, it's a little more flexible. They do have the, the vacation option in there. With, with both the Cary and the Wake County billing option, when you pay any amount of money, either towards your taxes or towards your water bill, your utility bill, the money goes towards the solid waste first. So if you don't pay enough money to cover in your, in, under the Wake County billing, if, if your tax bill is $400 and your solid waste bill is $150, $200, but you only pay $400, whatever your solid waste fee is gets paid first. So you become delinquent on your taxes. And that's the collection mechanism. That's the hook that the county uses to collect our, our property taxes. With Cary, just as an example, their, their fee is $15. So the first $15 of the utility bill that gets paid goes towards solid waste. So if you don't pay the entire bill, you become delinquent on your water bill, and then they cut your water off. So after a process. So there, that's the mechanism to, to ensure that people pay for the service. The third option is to include this with an RFP in our contract to go to the contractor and require the contractor to do the billing for us. The hook there is, if you don't pay your bill after so many days, they're going to cut your service off. They won't pick your trash up anymore. But that doesn't preclude somebody from continuing to put the trash on the curb. So we would have to probably enact some ordinances to, to make sure we have the authority to go in and, excuse me, take care of all that. But that's just an issue with that. So there's three, three, we think viable options for the council to consider if they want to move towards a user fee. And I'll stop there to see if there's any questions or maybe some discussion.
Up and up for questions or discussion, Michael?
Oh, right now, we, we don't seem to have a collection problem with either Wake County or Cary, because Cary does our water sewer, right?
Cary does our, our water sewer, yes.
And, and then Wake County does our property tax. So, I mean, we're not, so there isn't a problem now, so I don't see a problem. You anticipate a problem in the future if we went to one of those two?
No, sir. I think it's a matter of, if you decide to go to a user fee, there's an educational process outreach that we'll do to, to the citizens. I think as we look at maybe some of the flexibilities and the ability to pay it monthly rather than annually, maybe more palatable to some people. Again, that's, it's purely your council's decision there.
That was it. Steve and Chris? Go ahead.
Go ahead.
It'll be clear that I don't pay the bills in my house when I ask this question. So the, the, the Wake County bill is the, is that the bill for your real property or for your vehicle?
It'd be for your real property.
Okay.
It'll be on, it'll be on your property ta, your real property tax bill.
Okay. And that's normally, for people with a mortgage, that's normally?
It's an escrow.
Right. It's an escrow. The bank sends you the statement.
That's correct. And we went, we went through this process with, you may recall, with the stormwater fee. And so there'll be, again, an outreach requirement on our part to the residents to, to make sure they're aware to notify their escrow companies to bump up their escrow by $15, $16 a month, whatever the, whatever the number is.
But even though it's paid to, it's paid to the county once, it's the consumer, it pays it over a 12-month period or whenever they pay, pay their mortgage, right?
That would make sense?
If, if that's how your setup is.
Yeah, that's how, that's how I'm set up, I think.
Okay.
Okay.
So in other words, your mortgage company
Right.
Pays all the bills for you and then collects the money from you and hopefully it's pretty even.
Right.
For, to Michael's question, that was my question too. If, if Cary, if there's been any issues with the Cary billing for water, one thing that I thought of is if someone, if we went with that model for Cary collecting the bill and I have an issue with my trash, will I inadvertently call and complain to Cary?
And, and we discussed that.
Okay.
And one of the things that we're prepared to do is to have our folks in Public Works attend the customer service training, if you will, with the Town Cary, so that they, we basically can handle any call. If, if we inadvertently get a Cary call, they'll know how to forward it or what to do with it. And the same with, with Cary. That, we, we felt like that was a workable situation.
Okay.
We didn't see a, a major stumbling block with it.
Okay.
It was discussed.
Okay. The, the only other comment I would make is, I thought of, if, if we go with the merger option with Cary, so we would now have our water and solid waste handled by Cary. And it reminds me in DC, those license plates that say taxation without representation, you know, that, I mean, that's, there would be a lot of people in town who would have a fair amount of their bills controlled by people that they didn't elect, potentially. But anyway, that's my two cents.
Yeah, that's, I was.
Can I, can I just follow up to that? But
You were wrong.
And maybe you said this, Tony, and I missed it, but the, the billing doesn't mean we would have to use Cary's?
That's correct. We would have our own contractor, our own program. We're using, we're using Cary as a third-party vendor. And the reason we can do that is they're collecting our utility bill.
Right.
So they have the mechanism in place that if you don't pay your solid waste bill, your water will get cut off.
Right.
So it's a collection mechanism.
So it could just be a straightforward financial collection mechanism, and then we use whatever
That's correct.
Hauler to actually take care of it.
Yes, ma'am.
It doesn't have to be.
Yeah. So on your point, Chris, they would have representation.
No, what I, I was referring to the merger.
Oh, the merger. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah, not the collection piece, but.
And I'll be clear about that. The, the billing options are totally separate.
From the
From everything else. This just gives you the options. If you want to consider a user fee, we're trying to give you options to make that work if you, if you choose to go in that direction.
But to follow up, I have a couple of questions. But to follow up on Councilmember Gardner's, a merger would mean that we no longer are in the business of collecting trash. It would be run by another town.
That's correct.
And I don't know if I'm comfortable with that. I mean, that's another discussion. But, I mean, I think that taxation without representation, I mean, you know, I, I'm just, for the record, I, I'd like to, but I, I think that.
Do you get a lot of people say, boy, I'm glad you pick up my trash or?
Well, I mean, it, it does.
I've spoken a little bit, but I mean,
I don't know.
I've never known that to be a, a huge hot button issue on who's picking up the trash.
It's not that. It, for me, I'm sorry, it's more of the, the fee, that, the cost, you know, and it would presumably apply to people in Cary too. But it's just the principle of the fees could go up and, other than, you couldn't have a democratic way to
That's what I meant.
Balance that.
And it could be that whole trash to treasure thing too.
You've got a list of these, don't you?
There aren't that many water and sewer vendors, so that, that was an easy one. Whereas in this case, there are, there are many, many options. So
Yep.
That makes it very different.
Yep.
So just a one, sorry, go ahead. I have one or two more questions, but if you want others.
Go ahead. Then we'll, we'll hear from the left side or the right side.
So the first decision point, Tony, that we have to make is, we can either continue the way it is now, right? Or we decide that we're going to go with a fee. And then if we made a decision that we're going to go with a fee, the other options kick in of, you know, the different things you're going to talk about with, you know, variable rate, you know, program pay as you throw and, and those kinds of things. But what would the timeline be? Would it be, you know, would, would it be, would it, would it have taken to effect in this, like by the summer or is it another year out or would it?
If council gives us direction in the first of March that you want to change the funding mechanism from the general fund payment to a user fee, we feel like we would be able to enact that in July 1st, about July 1st.
And, and then would it be like, if you decided on a fee and then eventually, I mean, I know we're going to be talking about the, the pay as you throw program and those kinds of things, but, you know, could you have it as a fixed rate and then decide you're going to evaluate the other options for, you know, recycling and, I'm just trying to get a diff, different framework of the decision points.
Okay. Well, again, I think the, the decision points from the council would be, how do you want to fund your current program? The discussion about waste reduction programs is really a separate issue and is not affected by how you, what, what choice you make on how to fund the program. Because either way, there's going to either be a fee or a general fund hit on, on some of the waste reduction, on the waste reduction program we're going to talk about in just a minute. But this part of the presentation is really the, the crux of the matter. But this part of the presentation is really the crux of the matter of how you want to continue paying for solid waste.
Let's hear from this side of the table for a little bit. Any questions or comments?
I just have a comment. I really appreciate taking each of the options and breaking them out into the Wake County revenue and so forth. And I did have a question about, you know, would Cary allow us just to use their current water billing mechanism? And to pay the waste first is rather helpful to, because my biggest concern was enforcement. If someone doesn't pay, are they going to stop and skip three houses and then keep going and how that would cause some confusion? But these all seem very clear that just depending on which way we want to go, we wouldn't have a discontinuation of service. That would be disruptive, perhaps.
And it'll be the same policy that Cary follows now with their customers.
Very good. Thank you.
My other thought is that the way it's being done now is adequate to the needs of the residents. And I think it's a system that's not necessarily broken, so I'm not really looking to make many changes. But if it's the Will of Council, I'll listen.
Yeah, I think it's, that's a great point, TJ. And it's, I think right now, everything's probably fine. But I think the whole reason this was brought up originally, and this goes back at least a year, maybe more, was knowing in the future, meaning FY '16, there'd be pressure on the tax rate from bond, you know, bond passing 2012. So it was really a way to, we're always having to explain that while we have a 39-cent tax rate, three cents of that is for trash. And if you take that out, we're at 36, so we're right there with Cary type of discussion. And particularly when it comes to, you know, any times there's a tax increase being discussed, people are looking, they start, you know, looking at that rate and analyzing a little bit more. And I think that, knowing that that was going to happen in our future, meaning FY '16, was the reason this was even brought up as an discussion item. So while it may not be an issue today, I think fast forward just a couple of months from now, when we're talking about what do we do with the rate? How do we fund the bond? What about the privilege license? There's going to be a lot of different pressures on that tax rate that this could go a long way in addressing. And I think that's really, that's why. I don't disagree with you at all, but right now, everything's probably fine. But just in the very near future, I think it would be an issue. So, and I think it, it's a lot easier to, you know, people ask, you know, how are you with the other municipalities as far as your rate? And right now, we always have that little asterisk. We have to explain why we're three cents higher than we really are. So that's just a little background.
So this could actually be, the way we could look at it is a user fee could, money that we would have been spending out of the general fund, you know, could, we could offset some of the privilege license revenue and stuff, like you talk about in your briefing, you know, without raising taxes.
The council would have the opportunity to repurpose the money wherever they needed to repurpose it. That could be one of the areas.
And I just, the last comment on the same line, we don't always have the opportunity to explain our tax rate. Sometimes it's just written. And there's nothing behind it. You don't know really, you know, there's not a footnote, go down, includes three cents in tax, you know? So we don't always have the opportunity to have that quick debate explanation with folks. And I, and that could potentially be, you know, an issue, someone just looking at different areas to live as part of their consideration. Not to say that that's the only thing, but obviously it's not. But it's just one of those items that is silent, it sits there, and we're not there to defend it all the time, so. So Tony, what do you need from us tonight?
Well, ideally, you tell me tonight, we want to go this way, whatever that is. But understanding that this, you know, we've just brought you the information. But, you know, at your next meeting, if you're comfortable, if you've had a chance to digest everything, or by the March briefing, at least by the March briefing, if you could give us direction of you'd rather see us moving, you know, this direction or that direction, whatever direction it is you want us to go to. Like I said, if you're interested in franchising and merger, then automatically, we're going to, we'll come back to you with an extension on the current contract and we'll have to dig in deep and go through and get all that put together. If you are interested in the, obviously keeping it in the general fund, that's a no-brainer. If you're interested in moving it to a user fee, you have options. One of the largest stumbling block we saw with the user fee was how do we collect it? And then how do we collect it in such a way that we can ensure some level of collectability, percent collectability? And so we feel like we've brought you some options that if you wanted, you can do that.
Okay. Steve?
I mean, I don't want to get into much of the details on this, the pay-as-you-throw, but I would be interested...
It's coming up in a minute, right?
Oh, okay, it's coming up in a minute.
So if you could hold off on that?
Yeah, wait, wait.
We're going to do a little session.
I saw a question that thought we were over.
Yeah, my final, I didn't mention this earlier, that I guess I would have a little bit of pause with the franchise model too. I mean, ultimately, it's just a cost-benefit analysis, but one of the issues that could arise with the franchise is if you have a poor vendor and you're stuck with them for a long-term contract. Some people complain about cable back in the old days when they, the towns had cable franchises and the cable provider was poor. So I would have a concern with that, too. Anyway, yeah.
And there was one other thing. There was talk of non-commercial entities essentially subsidizing 42% when we use the general fund. So if you take this user fee further, essentially, we're saying that the residents will be paying 42% more because that money's got to come from somewhere. So essentially, this would be a way to sort of make it, it looks like we're getting more funds, but actually, the residents are paying more for the same service. So commercial right now is subsidizing it, and that's through the general fund. If we're okay with continuing that, that's one thing. But if we choose to not continue doing that, the fees to the residents go up. So just to be totally transparent, that's the outcome of making a user fee.
You're right. Some will actually end up paying more. You're right about that. Because they're probably not paying their fair share based on usage today. Because commercial is subsidizing and larger or more expensive homes are paying more.
Well, even the median homes will be paying more because they're paying less than they should right now.
I'm sorry, in today, today, today.
Today, now the...
Today, commercial and those people that live in the more expensive homes are subsidizing for everybody else.
Yes.
Right. No, you're absolutely correct about that.
That's the outcome if we choose to go to a user fee. So just to be clear.
And it's not dissimilar to, you know, the stormwater fee where it's, you know, it's paid proportion to your...
Partially. The commercial side is being subsidized by the residents in that fee, given the current system.
Well, I think we could debate that, but I think there are...
Stormwater?
No, for stormwater, it's, the general fund is subsidizing the commercial side. They're not paying the, they're not paying the equivalent that the stormwater said they should by area.
That's another, maybe another discussion.
That could be another discussion, but that's my understanding from the decision that was made back then.
There's a...
What was recommended was not chosen. You are correct about that.
Okay.
But I'm not, I'm not sure we're subsidizing. That is a whole other conversation.
That's another conversation, but I just want to put that out there as a discussion thought. Because we're deciding in two weeks, now's the time to bring that up.
A user fee. I mean, it is what it is. It's, you pay for the service that you use. Some people think that's fair, some people think it's unfair.
Shifting costs.
Well, then the other benefit, to TJ's point, the benefit of leaving it in the tax rate is that you get to write that off on your taxes. Whereas with a user fee, you don't get to write that off.
Well, technically, I think you could if Wake County does it, like the stormwater.
Technically, you can't.
Yes, technically, no, you can't. Not technically.
Not even technically, you can't.
Well, people, but I think...
Today, you can't write off your stormwater, so...
Okay, that's up to the county, but I think a lot of people think that and they're doing it.
They may think it, but technically, you can't.
Okay, but, right.
Legally, you can.
Yeah.
Well, that's fine, but I'm ready to jump in.
But that's...
I mean, enterprise fee, that's what this is called. Most towns...
No, yeah, go ahead. May I ask one more? If, so we can renew for another year, this is, I should have asked this earlier. At some point, do we just keep renewing each year or what's the...
It's not advised to just keep renewing from year to year. Our current contractor has agreed to hold his, with the allotted CPI increases in the contract, for an additional year if we needed to.
But pretty soon, we're going to have to enter into a normal, longer-term contract.
We have options. We can renegotiate the contract with the current vendor for multiple years, or we can go out to an RFP. So we have options in that area.
Okay, thanks, sorry.
A couple of years ago, when you guys renegotiated, it ended up being quite a savings.
It was actually an RFP. We went out for an RFP.
So there's no real expectation that that would happen again. I'm just saying that it did happen in the past.
I wouldn't think that it's a probable possibility.
Michael, did you?
You know, again, I'm a big proponent of doing what other towns do and not reinventing the wheel. Most towns, I think, look at this as an enterprise fund. It's a user fee, you pay for what you use. I think if we go, so I'd be in favor of doing that. To me, it doesn't matter if we go to, I mean, I have a preference over Wake County or Cary, but that's fine. I mean, but for staff, if you want my opinion, I would like to go to a user fee. And in two weeks, I can tell you which one, but...
Is there, the other argument that TJ brought up, the point about certain people will pay more, but is there also an argument that by having a fee, I mean, right now, out of the 39-cent rate, one and a half million dollars every year is going for the trash pickup. It's subsidized. So potentially, you could say that dollars out of the general fund could be used for other things if you pay a fee. I mean, some people, I don't know.
I think it's more fair. I think people understand that, I think. And then the next discussion we'll have is about recycling. And recycling, then, it's like water usage, then. If you recycle more, you could start paying less of a fee. But that's for the next discussion.
I think before I make any decision, I need to understand why we're doing this. You just brought up the whole idea of the tax rate and what we're trying to accomplish here. I think we need to have that discussion. All I hear is that we want to, in some cases, be fair and charge people for what they're using, but there's a revenue and expense side to this, and there's a tax rate involved here. So I think I'd like to understand, understand everybody's position on that. And are we lowering the tax rate? Are we trying to recover privileged license? Are we, this is the year we're supposed to raise two cents for the Morseville Aquatics and Fitness Center. So I think there, I'd like to understand, so there's no misunderstandings as we move into budget, what exactly some of us think we're accomplishing and others are probably on a different page, so.
And that's part of the reason for the work session, is to give you that opportunity to talk those things out.
So then I guess the, like, to take it to the next step, if we considered a user fee, then the next question would be what are we going to do with that savings in the general fund? Is that right?
That's what I thought.
Well, I think I was always, I mean, that was the reason, this was not brought up for any other reason, this whole discussion about moving to a user fee. It's, you know, the cost is going to be the cost pretty much the same regardless of where it's billed, with some slight, you know, there might be an administrative fee, but let's just say it's pretty much the same. So it's not, it's not a question of, you know, the effect on the town as a whole, that's going to be the same. It's knowing that we have a pressure on our tax rate, and this is something thought about a couple of years ago, back, going back to, you know, 2013 or so. And it was, you know, we kind of had a councilman's agreement on, you know, we're going to phase in this four cents, two we did a couple of years ago, we're going to do another two in this fiscal year coming up. So nobody should be surprised that we're going to probably look at a two-cent increase because of the 2012 parks bond to help fund that, to get that going.
Right.
And the other thing I think that's come up more recently is some of these other pressures, privileged license, to be exact. It doesn't look like we're going to get recovery. I don't want to even say half. Who knows what's going to happen there? But the mechanism, if you were to take off the three cents off your tax rate, it would, you know, unfortunately, unfortunately, it would be replaced pretty quickly with the two cents for the bond. And then maybe there's a additional, we haven't even talked about the other pressures in the budget, what else we need. But it gives you that ability, you know, to think in those terms. You'd still be, you'd end up, you know, right around where you started as far as the tax rate. It'd be a user fee, people using the service would pay for it. So that was really kind of the genesis, the push to even talk about this. Otherwise, it doesn't, there's no, if we weren't going to do a tax increase, probably no reason to even talk about this. But it's this explanation you're going to have to go through this summer of when people stack up the rates next to each other, why are you 39 cents? Well, we're not really 39, we're really 36.
I'd like to add some comment. My understanding that we have just under a million dollars of loss due to the privileged license changes in legislature. So this trash talk that we're now entertaining is approximately the same value or cost to the town. So that's where I'm coming from, is how can we fill that void that we currently will have in the fiscal year 2016? Now, the tax rate, I'm assuming it will remain the same. We have a huge capital improvement list that we're, we started working on at the retreat, knowing that we could never fulfill all of those projects. But if we were able to fill the gap of the privileged license with some change, we might have a little extra money for the capital improvement program where we could advance some of those ideas. And that's where I'm looking at. I'm not looking at lowering the tax rate with this program. I'm just looking at current state and then what other options we have and build upon that with the possible bond increase that was agreed prior to my tenure here on the council. So I just want to be very clear, it's not about reducing the tax rate for me, it's about meeting the goals and service needs of our town first, so.
But it's also a way of offsetting, I mean, like the mayor said, the tax rate we all know is going to go up two cents in next year.
Yes.
So it's a way of offsetting the loss of privileged license revenue without raising an additional tax increase. That's what we're saying. It's not lowering the tax rate.
I think we have to have more discussion about that.
And the other thing is, we're making, we're looking at the solution because economic circumstances have put extreme financial pressure, you know, on all of the towns. So that's, I think, one of the reasons we're looking at it. When I read this memo, it said a gap, right? There's going to be an $800,000 gap of revenue going into this budget already that we're facing, correct? Am I correct?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
Privilege license.
Yes. So that's the way, that's where I was coming from.
I think the tax rate is another discussion, you know?
But to be clear, if we're going to leave the tax rate at 39 cents and charge a fee, you're already, there's no, there's no leftover capacity because you're replacing the million dollars, almost million dollars for the privileged license. And we have told the public that this would be the year we would start devoting two cents towards the Morseville Aquatics and Fitness Center. So you're not, you're not, you're not gaining capacity then. And that's... So you're not, you're not gaining capacity then, in that scenario, so.
Well, you're getting a penny of capacity, right? 350,000, right? If you're saying, if three cents is gone away, it's being replaced by two cents for the bond, and then one other penny.
And another penny for the privileged license.
Right, so that gets you halfway there, which is better than none of the.
No, I agree, privileged license as a whole, I get that. Oh, no, 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 I get that, but I'm just saying there's no capacity beyond that, now you've kinda used it all up.
Well, I'm with Vicky, that's another discussion, I mean, we can have that later.
I think for me, that's critical to my decision in what I do here.
By going to a user fee.
So I don't think the needs or the ability, us wanting to do something about it, none of that really changes. I agree, a lot of this is semantics, but it's really, it's really looking at our revenue streams, our expenses, and taking something that is, I mean, we're one of, what, three municipalities in Wake County that does it this way, getting us more on par with everyone else that charges a fee for their trash. And the benefit is that we get to do that and introduce the two cents, and maybe make up for some of that privileged license loss and still be where we are today. That's pretty good, if you were to be able to get to that point, were you able to accomplish all that, realizing there's a fee that has gone out to the residents, and they're, but it's not dissimilar to, you know, introduction of stormwater, other things. All in all, costs will go up, there's no doubt about it.
One of the tough things, go ahead TJ.
I just fear that we're like the round peg square hole, we're trying to fit everything in based on a tax rate. And I think our programming should drive our budget, not our tax rate, drive our programming and the progress that we can make for our town. So I think that we should have the vision of what we would like the town to be, and then decide what that is, and then find the funding. And I think we're trying to back into things by trying to create funding, and we're just shifting the burden from commercial to the residents. The legislature did that with privileged license, they took commercial revenue away from us, and now we're looking to also shift, increase commercial subsidy onto the residents as well. And I just think that the way it was, was not broken, and we're compounding the problem and the pressure on our residents, if we consider going down this path that some of us are considering.
I don't, net-net for the town, it doesn't change a thing, it does not change a thing. We're gonna have the same pressures, we're gonna have the same wants and needs, we're gonna do the same thing that we always did. It's putting us, it's leveling the playing field with the other towns. It really is not, you know, it's, it's leveling the playing field.
The discussion is not about who has the lowest property tax rate, but who provides value to their residents. That's a whole nother discussion, and that's a discussion that I think that is useful. Comparing tax rates is not a positive, useful discussion, it's a race to mediocrity. If we want the town to get better, we have to focus on programming and providing value, and not just trying to be the least expensive town.
I think that happens regardless of what, regardless of where we head with this. So we had a couple of points here, in two weeks, we'll need to decide on maybe some bigger picture thing, franchise versus merger versus not doing nothing versus a fee. Tony, I know you have a little bit more to discuss tonight, so I'd like to give you the opportunity to do that. And we'll continue the discussion, okay? Tony, let's hear about the next section.
As has been mentioned earlier, we have had conversations with a company that specializes in reducing solid waste. And through that program, they actually, you can see an increase in your recycling services. So we've had several conversations with them, in fact, one of the gentlemen we've talked to, Greg Pepperrell's in the audience there, with Waste Zero, and we put together just a little bit of information, because this is a new venture, this will be a new venture for the town, and actually, a new venture for Wake County, and a new venture for the state. There currently aren't any municipalities that are participating in a program like this through Waste Zero. But I've tried to list out some benefits here, and there are some challenges that we've identified. You know, it does, it's not a hundred percent cost recovery program, it's not designed to be. The maximum rates that they have indicated that we would probably see in waste reduction would be about 40, 45%. In some of the discussions we've had with other towns around the area, you know, the ones that they provided for us, the towns that Waste Zero provided for us, they're showing about a 41% on the average reduction. So I don't think their numbers are that far off. It should increase recycling efforts. The premise of a pay-as-you throw is that you are actually paying more if you throw away more solid waste. Because under this program, their particular program, residents would purchase Morrisville trash bags. They would be specifically designed for the town of Morrisville. And the more trash that you have, the more bags you're gonna need. So the idea is that you would learn to recycle better, and you would recycle more materials into your waste can, into your recycling can, and then you would actually have less solid waste. The, and the incentive there is your overall cost, the more solid waste you have, the more bags you need, therefore, the more cost that you have. And it is an extremely very environmentally friendly program, and there's, we have no questions about that. Being new, there's a lot of questions about a program like this, and, you know, how well is it gonna get received? There's a large amount of educational effort that's needed to the public, they're willing to assist with that and help us with that part of it. You know, our revenues are gonna be based on projections of what our bag sales are. The more that our residents recycle to a certain point, the less revenue that we get. So, you know, I'll show you a chart in just a minute on how that works. There are costs to having the program, we have to administer that cost with the company, so there are some additional programming costs for that. There are startup costs involved with it in terms of getting it to where it squared away. One of the issues that we have not been able to get a clear read on is the likelihood or not for there to be contamination in the waste stream or in the recycle stream. If you are paying more for trash bags to put it in, are you gonna be more willing to put trash in your recycling container? We don't know, and then how do we find that out? And what are the consequences if we do that? Some of the companies, excuse me, some of the municipalities that we talked with, three out of the four all have a fine program, they have an enforcement program to where they fine residents if they're putting trash into recycling. We would have to figure out how to do that. One of the suggestions has been that they would mount cameras in the trucks, they could tell what was going in there. Sounds great, but somebody has to monitor that, that information has to go somewhere, something has to be done with it. That costs money, and that's gonna, that's gonna come back to the town with our waste hauler. Waste Zero is not a hauling company, they're a company that promotes solid waste reduction. So anything that we put into the truck, and any additional time that's required for the operator of the truck to determine what's a contaminated cart and what's not, is gonna be charged back to us through the rate that our hauler charges. The company has indicated they'd be willing to pay for the equipment and so forth. But again, that's just part of the issue that we would have to work out and how that works. And we've talked with two of the leading waste haulers in the area, our current waste hauler, and they acknowledge that if we're gonna be asking them to do more enforcement work or more investigative work on what goes into their truck, it's gonna increase our cost. The, I mentioned the quality control and concerns, and that, again, is, are we gonna get more solid waste to go into the recycle stream? Because people are trying to cut costs in there. And the other part is, if they're using a, what we call a contaminated bag, a bag from somewhere else. Now, again, our bags would be manufactured specifically for the town, they'd have certain logos on it and color and that kind of stuff, but could somebody get a rogue bag and throw it in there? In the northeastern part of the country where this is prevalent, several of the towns that we were given a check with have curbside bag pickup. So there's no chance to have the wrong bag there, because if you do, the waste hauler's not gonna pick it up. There is a company, there is a town that we talked to that has a cart system, and they put the bags in the cart and they pick them up. And that's what we operate here, we operate automated trucks, one-armed bandits, that come out and pick your cart up and dump it and go, and it's a very efficient method. We have no way of telling what color bag is in that cart until it goes in the truck, and if there's a camera in the truck and it takes a picture of it. And then it takes a picture of it, now what do we do with that picture? How do we tag it back to that resident? If you're talking about a single-family home, it's a little easier, but when you're talking about townhomes, it becomes much more of a problem, problematic. You know, we have some concerns about inventory, we have identified probably five or six vendors, likely vendors in our town that would carry our bags, and those are mostly the grocery stores, Walmart, Sam's, people like that. We're a town of 5,300 people, or 5,300, excuse me, 5,300 families. When you spread that out over five or six vendors, that's about 1,000 bags per vendor. There's incentive issues, we're not paying an incentive to the vendor to carry our bags. We don't know what that's gonna be. When we checked with towns north of here, up north, they have multiple vendors, 30 or 40 vendors. So the likelihood of you not being able to get a bag is less. So those are just some things that we feel like are some concerns that we have with the program. To illustrate some of the costs, we gave our data, our tonnage data to Waste Zero, and they were very gracious in putting together some numbers. We've expanded on that to really kind of capture all of the costs and to kind of spell them out. But our sample is using our solid waste tonnage, and we're basing it on 5,300 customers, and we're using a million-dollar contract, that's typically what we're paying now. And the maximum cost of $2 a bag, and that's the dollar amount that they have indicated is usually the maximum you can charge per bag. So out of that $2, $1.68 goes to the town and .32 goes to Waste Zero. And that's to handle their administrative charge and the cost of producing the bags. So in the first column here, that would be our current program. Our collection costs will over 900,000, our tipping fees, it says disposal fees, that would be tipping fees that we pay to Wake County, we're not paying, well, we're paying now through our rate, but the waste hauler does. So we have a million-dollar program, and when you go down to the bottom in the green line, we need to find a million dollars, so we're doing that now through our general fund. The next three columns assume certain levels of waste reduction that Waste Zero, from their data and experience, indicate that we could be able to achieve. And so when we go down the first column with assuming a 25% reduction in our tonnage, then our tipping fees would be affected, because we wouldn't be paying as much tipping fee there. So the program cost would be a little over $976,000. We would add back the value of the .32 that is charged for, to Waste Zero, $88,000, and our total program cost is a million dollars. So as we sell the bags and we get revenue in, the bottom half of this is a revenue stream, you can see in the green line, there's about a little over $500,000 in this example that the town will have to cover, either through a fee or through the tax rate, some method. And then as you go further to 35% or 45%, you will see that we are throwing away less trash, which, you know, is always a good thing, it's easier on landfills. Again, environmentally, I don't have any qualms with the theory of this and the concept, but it does have an impact on our cost as we go along. So that's just, again, something we would have to, again, pay for out of the fee. The residents are already paying for bags, and then if you attach a fee to it, now they have a fee, or it's paid through the tax rate. But, you know, kind of boiling it down, this is how the program will work. The, we were, we have been looking at alternative strategies. We're a member of the Wake County Solid Waste Advisory Committee, Blake and his staff attend those meetings, and there's, they've been talking about this, I mean, Waste Zero has pitched this to other towns, the City of Raleigh looked at it, they're still kind of looking at it, they haven't made any decisions, I don't know, there's a, we're not getting any indication probably they're gonna just wholesale jump into a program like this with Waste Zero. So we started looking around to see, well, are there alternatives to this? And there are some. One in particular is we could potentially accomplish having a very green program, very environmentally friendly program, with the cart systems that we currently have. And the idea would be this, and it's just, it's a concept. We currently have a 95-gallon trash can and a 65-gallon recycling cart. We could offer residents two options for their solid waste cart, a 95-gallon container, and it would charge them 2X, or we could charge them a 65-gallon solid waste container, and it would cost them 1X. And then we would increase their recycling container from the 65-gallon that we have now to a 95-gallon. So in essence, we have kind of incentivized the resident that if you throw away more trash, you're gonna pay more for that cart. If you throw away less trash and you recycle more, you're gonna save money. And my point of all this is, there are options that I think out there that we could consider. And I think that, you know, one of the good things is that Waste Zero has brought, it's just kind of opened the horizon a little bit, it's kind of opened our eyes to say, hey, maybe there are some things that we can do differently. We already were looking at our existing contract to see, are there things we could do different just with the existing contract, and there are things that we can do there in terms of cart size. What we wanted not to do is end up with four or five different cart sizes. We talked to a town out in Arizona, and they have, their program would just drive you batty. They have all these different sizes and cost ranges, and it doesn't make sense. But my point is, there are some options out there that we could look at. And I think the other thing to consider, at least from my standpoint, is we don't have to make this decision today, okay? If the town, you know, once you determine your funding route and you wanna go, we can bring back strategies that could be implemented at any point, and what I would say is this, at any point at a fiscal year, because you typically set your rates and your fees on the fiscal year. So there's nothing to say that next fiscal year or the fiscal year after that, you could implement some type of waste reduction strategy. Give us the opportunity to look at it much more comprehensively and give the Wake County Solid Waste Advisory Group an opportunity, we'd like to see if there might be some regional things that can be done that would help that. So, you know, we think it's a program worth looking at, if you can reduce solid waste and increase recycling. We think this particular type of program, a pay-as-you throw, has some situations that, and in our conversations with, you know, with Waste Zero, you know, they've said that they haven't had any issues with this, they have indicated they'd help us with the educational part, they will help the vendors get stocked the first time. They will, you know, work with whatever vendors are gonna stock our bags and help them get everything set up. And then following that, the vendor calls in, places their order, and Waste Zero will monitor that. They've gone through an operational cycle of how this would work. We just met with them last week, I think, was, on that cycle. There's a part of it that we were gonna have to clear through the finance folks and maybe the attorney on how the money is put into a third-party bank. and maybe the attorney on how the money is put into a third-party bank and managed. But that's a that's a detailed issue that we have to we'd have to look at. So in in my information to you, I feel like that we need additional study. And and I think that to find the right program for the town will require that. It may be in in at the long run, it may be Waste Zero, and their program may may kind of rise to the top. But I do believe that there are other alternative strategies out there for reducing waste that we haven't even explored yet. And and Blake is actively involved in the Wake County Solid Waste Group, and they've already assigned a task force to kind of start looking into some of these. So there's there is interest in the county of other towns to look at these these waste reduction programs. So with that, I'll just kind of leave it.
Chris, go ahead.
Go ahead. I insist.
So basically, this is, I mean, it's a metering system. I mean, you're paying, you're you're, the more you recycle, the less people would pay, correct?
The less solid waste you throw away.
Yeah.
Under a pay-per-throw, and presumably the less money you would pay each month. That's correct.
So the thing that's intriguing, and I've gone, I mean, I like the idea of being open to innovative ideas that can yield ROI, you know, and this and the Waste Zero solution does seem to. But it does seem like there's others, you know, solutions out there that you think could yield that same kind of benefit. And I I would like to, you know, see, maybe, you know, this whole idea maybe sent to our, in addition to the Waste Review Committee, maybe our Environmental Recycling Committee, where, you know, they can evaluate these kinds of solutions and then bring back to council, you know, recommendations on, you know, what, you know, whether this could be something viable that we could. I mean, I think as Councilmember Colley's, you know, talked a lot about sustainability and an environmentally friendly town, I mean, this certainly kind of solution plays very well into that. But it's, I think, because nobody else in the region is doing it, and we know there's a lot of work, there's a little bit more risk, and that just in terms of things, uncertainties that we don't know. So I just want to open that up. I mean, I think that the final component is that these kinds of programs are often hard for the public to change the behavior if they've been doing it a certain way. So, you know, one is pay a fee, either keep it the same or pay a fee. But then when you start getting and having to buy, you know, bags and that kind of stuff, it just is just, you get the culture has to accept that. Maybe eventually over time they will. I'd be curious to learn more from Waste Zero in terms of the clients that they have in the north and how that, you know, how that process transpired and those kinds of things.
And we, the municipalities we talked to, we asked them about, you know, issues, concerns, complaints. One town started the program, they had so many complaints, they they abandoned the program. But their tipping fees went so high that they had to, they had to do something. So they brought the program back. And a lot of the complaints were at the startup phase, which you would you would expect. The but in the in the in the towns that we were that we were given to look at, I think three of them have the curbside bag pickup. That's a that's a totally different program than we are in there. We're a cart town, basically. If we go to bags, we now go to a manual pickup system. When you go to a manual pickup system, you increase the cost of your program just by virtue of that. So, again, there's pros and cons both ways to look at it. But in all fairness, that, you know, I think once their programs got in got working and they, it's like anything else, once you work all the bugs out, they're still doing the program. So that's why I say it's, I don't think it's a bad program, not trying to shoot it down. I just don't think that we're ready for it yet to to try to put this thing through, especially in on July 1st. I think that we would need to to probably go through some more, several more rounds of discussions with how this is going to work, and then be ready to implement it at another point in time, which we can. There's nothing that, no decision you're going to make regarding how you're going to fund the program that affects the waste reduction programs. And like I said, we'd already looked at opportunities to increase, give residents the opportunity to increase recycling without incentivizing it.
So you could begin with a fee if we did decide to go down that road, and then you go, you know, add this kind of program in.
That's it.
On a fiscal.
Sure.
Sorry, I'll let others ask.
Or the tax rate, or the tax rate, either one.
Here for Chris, I'm going to go down here. Chris?
Yeah, it's really interesting. I think I want to study it more. First reaction is there are a lot of the unknowns that make me nervous and just in my life experience here, asking folks to go to the grocery store to buy trash bags. I mean, in places, it can work, and I'm not, I'm just not sure here we're we're ready for that. But, I mean, I want to learn more about it. I did have three quick questions. The municipalities that there, do you know which, what they are?
Sanford, Maine, Warchester, Massachusetts, Fall River, Massachusetts, and Middletown, Rhode Island.
Okay. And I I don't know any of those places.
Population-wise, the town of Rhode Island was about 17,000.
Okay.
The Fall River folks, I think about 89, 88, 89,000. The Warchester, or Warchester, whatever.
Worcester.
Warchester.
Worcester.
Sorry, Worcester, you're sorry. They were 180,000. They're a big town. And then Sanford, Maine, which is the town that started the program, and then because of their operational complaints and situation, canned it. And then their their tipping fees went up significantly for them, so they brought the program back. They're about 20,000 in population.
Okay. So the my next question is tied to that is, do the retail accounts that sell the grocery bags typically make any revenue off of them?
Not according to what we've been told.
Okay. So that model may work in smaller municipalities where there are more sort of market stores, smaller stores. Here, our retail accounts are tend to be larger, chain-driven, and the shelf space is what I'm getting at. How are we going to incentivize the the chains who have their sets drawn for the entire state to carve out bags for Morrisville that they're not going to make any money on?
And we raised that question with them, and, you know, they've indicated that that's what that's what their marketing people do. They go in and they take care of all that for you.
And it may be that if only one store sells them and you have to get your bags, then everyone will go to that one store perhaps.
And that's kind of the the discussion that we had with with Waste Zero was that, again, we've identified, I think it was five or six vendors that we've had grocery stores, basically. We would have, you know, we don't have a hardware store. You have to go to Lowe's. I don't know if Lowe's drives Lowe's to get their their trash bags, but they might. But when you split up to 5,300 customers, it's about 1,000, I mean, if you just did the math, it's 1,000 per store. What's the incentive?
Yeah.
You know, and then the other thing I was concerned with is that if you're used to going to this grocery store to get most of your stuff, and they're either out or they decide not to stock it, then you're going to go somewhere else. And it's the limitations that we have, I think, is what I'm trying to say. It's not like you were saying, there's not a mom and pop on every corner, you know, that that might be selling the selling the bags. So, again, those are, you know, through education, you know, community outreach, those kinds of things. Anytime you're starting a new program, those are things that we have to that we have to take in consideration. Not saying they're insurmountable. It's just there's an effort there to do it. And Waste Zero has indicated they would help us if we decide to go with that program. So, you know, I think we, you know, we've got that level of commitment from them. And then the other thing that came out just recently in our discussion, we were talking about the overhead and the startup cost. We have to order bags ahead of time, and we order it from Waste Zero. They do the shipping to the vendor. They do the invoicing on our behalf to the vendor and that kind of stuff. But just yesterday, I was told that that we, Morrisville, would not have any startup costs, that Waste Zero would underwrite that cost. So there's a change at, I say the 12th hour, I'm not sure why, but there was a change in that. And when I went through this with them, it was explained to me that, well, what we were being told originally was one model, but now this was a new model they had. So, again, you know, their process may be changing a little bit. And I don't blame them for changing their models and doing what they want to do, but we need consistency. And we want to make sure if we're going to go to this program, that we're going to deliver a product to the council and to the citizens that we feel like we can back. At this time, I I'm just not, I don't, I'm not confident that we can do that, given the discussions we've had.
The and the the manual, final question, the the manual pickup. So we are a container, one-armed bandit, is that you said? So if we went to really need to enforce this, we would have to get go away from that model and have people, I guess, like in the old days when I was a kid, that would take the bags out of the the trash can and make sure, yep, that's a Morrisville bag, we can take it? And then that's how, is that how it's enforced?
Yes. They have a sticker program, and they would, if you have a contaminated bag, then they would not pick it up. Or if they picked it up, there's a program, a finding program that we that they they implement to find that to find the resident. But in the curbside pickup, you just bring your bag out to the curb and set it down.
But so how is the bag, though?
Let me, I'll explain that.
Yeah.
The
Like, how do dogs like?
There's two sized bags, what I was told yesterday now, there's two sized bags, the and what we've been used to dealing with in our discussions is a 32-gallon bag. 32 gallons, that's twice the size of your tall kitchen bag, basically. And that's what you would put your, whatever bags you have. You go upstairs and have a small bag, and downstairs and have a bag, you put it all in that bag. And you bundle it up, and you put it on the curb, and they come by and pick it up.
What's the bag made of?
A very, very rugged plastic material.
Okay, so raccoons.
It's not like the the black plastic bags that you go to Lowe's and buy. It's much heavier from what we've been told. Greg, I think that that correct. It's a very, very sturdy bag.
Okay.
But you put all of your, all of your solid waste.
So we've got this big bag, I guess, final point is, like, I thought a lot of the the trash haulers went to the one-armed bandit model because of workers' comp issues and people manually picking up heavy bags. They pull a muscle, slip a disc. I mean, it was very expensive, you know?
All of that's true, and it relates back to our cost. They do have a second-sized bag, which is a 15-gallon bag.
Okay.
So you could use a 15-gallon bag and go put that in your cart, as many as you want to put in there, as many as your cart will hold. But you're going to pay the same price as prorated for that sized bag.
But if you do the cart, there's no way for the garbage person to make sure you're not freeloading by just throwing your trash in without the bag.
Correct.
Well, you're saying there might be a video camera that would record it and then you know.
But then what do you do with that? What do you do with that information?
I know, I'm just saying.
Yeah.
So let me, I'm going to move on here, let Vicki ask a question real quick and cover this.
I just want to validate some of the assumptions on the financials that you presented to us. The million dollars that we currently have, that fee includes solid waste, recycling, and curbside pickup for yard waste?
Yes.
So as we go further in the reduction cycle, do the recycling fees increase with the volume of recycling matter, and that accounts for some of that slight increase on your cost curve? And as you were moving to the right, I saw more reduction solid waste and a higher increase.
Picture.
Yes, exactly, precisely, in the nice green.
The the cost for recycling would not go up. We would not get a benefit from that.
Or a penalty, right?
Right.
Okay. And so the swapping would be of the loss of revenue from the solid waste reduction. That's where we would.
Our tipping fee would go down.
So less bags.
Less bags.
Right.
Very good. Compliance was also a concern of mine about using our current mechanism of tipping with the one-armed bandit and people not using compliant bags. I I like compliance kind of thing, but it seems like how do we enforce the behavior, encourage the behavior, and and spot the behavior? We'd almost have to have a checklist with which house, you know, was noncompliant. That adds an additional time burden to the pickups as well as, you know, the compliance issue and the the revenue stream. So there's there's multiple layers of challenge, I think.
Michael? Well, yeah, I mean, I'm a big fan of trying to stabilize, make it sustainable, any program. So, and I think you guys have heard me say this before, I saw the briefing over a year ago with DILs, I think, over at Wakeup Wake County. But thank you, Tony. It's good information. I think it's worth having Merck look at and look at it, or at least, as you indicated, there were other options out there. Because when you Google this, I mean, if you Google pay-per-throw, the EPA has been, this is a program that they've been looking at since 1999. They list states, towns that do it. There's Austin, Texas, there's Pasadena, California. It's mandated, I think, in Oregon, every everywhere in Oregon, you have to do something like this. So there are a lot of ways to do it. Tulsa was the one I I found interesting. It's a big town. Oklahoma, they're doing it. They're doing it, I think, more carts. So I think it'd be worthwhile to have Merck look at it and maybe brief it the way Way Zero looks at it as a starting point and then see what they come up with. But I just, I'm with you, it's tough to implement. So I like the idea of we start with a committee and they can look at it, because there's going to have to be buy-in. And then think down the road that if we can't, you know, that, to me, it's been about some of the contract, and you've alluded to it, that a contract can be one year, three years, five years. I mean, as far as, I wouldn't hate to see us lock ourselves into a five-year contract that we had to break to do something. I pay extra for it.
Right. The the
But that's down the road.
Contract for hauling, okay, is a would be a separate contract.
Right.
Depending on what type of waste reduction program the town elected to go for, it may or may not impact the cost of that, but it can be negotiated into contract.
Okay. As long as we're keeping that open, I'm, you know, that's all I'm looking for.
Yeah, I think it's flexible.
Yeah.
All right. We'll try to wrap it up here. I do have a couple of questions, for example, and this is, I'm glad you had the slide up. So my, if you look over at the right-hand side, that's kind of the nirvana. We've done the 45% or 35% reduction. But my my concern is if, let's say I'm a typical homeowner and I use two bags a week, let's say, I don't know if that's a good or bad number, but let's just say two, $4 a week, $16 a month approximately, which is kind of what the current fee is. Not only am I paying that, but then the bottom line is there's still 618,000 that hasn't been recovered, which has to be from somewhere. So I'm I'm still struggling with our, even the concept of ROI. I don't I don't see it. I see a negative ROI, if anything. So I would, I'd love to hear more about that and maybe am I thinking of it wrong? But the way, just looking at it, looking at the financials, it looks like I'd be out of pocket the same amount I am right now. Yes, we would be reducing a landfill, which is a good thing, but there's 618,000 that's been added to my my cost. And so I guess I'd like to hear more about that, like to hear the debate against that that theory. And the other thing, just thinking about this, is there, have we quantified the problem? Recently, a couple, we all had those brown tray kind of looking things that we did our recycling in, right?
Yeah.
10 years ago, we had the the brown thing that we threw everything in, a little rubber strap, little rubber things on the top where we tried to tie down all our
I still use that.
And some people still use it. But then we got the opportunity to use these carts, and I think most people went to these carts, which would indicate that there's probably more recycling than there was under the old method of those trays we used. So is there any data on the problem that we're trying to address?
That's a good question.
I guess I'd ask what kind of data are you, like, we're not trying to, we're not trying to
Well, I'm just saying, you know, it's being sold as a waste reduction program.
Right.
What if we're already there? I'm not saying we are, but how do we know where we are right now?
Well, I think in in talking to to Blake, we're at about 25%, maybe 30% right in that neighborhood.
Of what? What does that mean? 25% of what?
Of waste and recycling, the total charge.
Okay. So with this program, if it worked to its maximum, we go from 25 up to another 12, another to 37% approximately?
Well, he's saying he'll take us another, or this program will take us another 45% reduction from where we're at today.
Right. So that that would be a 37% then over
Total.
Total, right? If we go from 20, 25 to 37, that's about a 50% reduction. Right, okay.
You're the accountant. I trust you. 25%.
So anyway.
Because this is based on what we're doing. Because this is based on what we're doing.
So, so, and where do you get that, where do you get that number from? Is it, is it someone going through our trash and saying, you know, the Johnson's throughout this aluminum can or this newspaper? What's the, what's the?
That's exactly what it is.
Is it?
But not, it's not that. That's on a house basis. They're, they're, they're not. They measure the, the way the truck.
Okay.
When they go to landfill, they weigh the waste that goes to solid waste. When they take the waste to a recycling facility, they pay them by the ton, so they weigh it there, so that they have the total waste generated by the town versus.
So how do you know that there's a aluminum, aluminum can in my trash?
It gets counted as trash.
It could, yes.
Oh, I know, I know. So how do you, how do you know that though? My point is, I don't know that we have, I'm just wondering what, what the problem is that we're trying to address first of all.
I think the premise that the town has.
Sorry, Blake.
Certainly from, from a staff perspective and even from Merck's perspective is that the more we can encourage recycling, the better we are.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Absolutely.
So how do we do that in a way that has an ROI that is acceptable to the town, that is a process that is acceptable to the, the customer? Okay? And what are other towns doing? And Councilmember Schlink, you know, indicated that's something we ought to be looking at and benchmarking towards. And, and other towns are doing things differently than we are. And, and we're taking a serious look at that, even through our next contract period. The idea I told you about the cans, well, why do we need a 65-gallon recycling can? Why not a 95-gallon can? Given that option. So there are things that we can do as a town. And that's what we're trying to do is, is encourage more recycling.
I get it. And don't, don't get me wrong, I'm all, I'm all, I'm 100% behind doing what we can to reduce, reduce that. But it also has to be weighed against the, you know, more of the.
It really boils down to.
Reality of how to administer it and cost.
Part of this boils down to that, what are your, what are your, what are your budget constraints? What are, what are your budget goals? Right now, we've, we've identified, you know, some, some strain on the general fund, potentially. And so if we're going to, if we're going to try to reduce that strain, how do we do that as cost effective, as cost effectively as we can? With this particular program, it'll take us some years to get to this 45, it's not going to happen tomorrow. And there's still a cost involved. It's, it's still shifting the cost from, part of the cost from the general fund to their users. The general fund still has to pay for the part that's left, either through taxes or through a user fee. So, and that's why I said, this conversation, not about the waste reduction, doesn't affect your, your decision about how you want to pay for it. That's really based on what your goals are from a, from, from the town's budget standpoint.
Okay. I, I appreciate everyone's comments. I'm going to kind of cut it off unless there's a major point anyone, anyone wants to make right now.
I'd just like to send it to Merck to have this all flushed out. It's, it's pretty simple. From the simplest standpoint, Mark, what happens is it's, it's up north, it's more because of their tipping fees. But you're sending less garbage trucks to the dump to dump there, which costs you money. What you're doing is you're converting, you're sending recyclable to a place where you get paid for recyclable, not that much, but you're sending less trucks to a dump site because you have less waste because it's being recycled more. So that's the, that's the savings. I admit it's a big shift, but I would appreciate it going to Merck just so that they could kind of flush it out and look at this. Because it has to be, that's the biggest problem all these programs have, is that the public has to make that switch that, in their head.
Well, could we, is the council agreeable to, two weeks from now, make, making that decision if it's, if, if we're all on board with trying to do something to reduce waste and if it makes sense to go to our recycling committee to kind of shepherd that process? If that's, if we're all on board with that?
That's what I would.
You know, then we can move.
I think Blake will say.
Yes, Blake.
Wednesday last week, we did present the Way Zero concept to Merck. And they went through the, the presentation that we saw, as well as we showed them the financial information that we've shown up here today to, to Merck. And one of their biggest concerns was the enforcement of it. So the policing of the bags and that sort of thing. So that, they were kind of uncomfortable with that part of it.
And I, and I think what's, what I heard is that it's, we don't want to limit the discussion just to this one program, but maybe if we can go back to Merck and say, with that as a, as a consideration and maybe there's some other options, you know, almost like what we did with the, you know, transportation funding, Blue Ribbon Committee, if we could kind of give them an assignment to, you know, take the next six months, figure this out, what, what are some good options for us, including what Tony's mentioned, including this plan, including any others?
And then maybe if we could incorporate anything for this fiscal year for that contract?
Yeah.
I, I think that, that's a very good suggestion, is to, you know, direct Mark to look at some waste reduction programs, how, and, and bring you back, you know, through staff, bring back the information. And, and to Councilmember Schlink's note, yes, there are things we can do just in our regular contract that would help encourage more recycling.
Blake, it sounds like if you just met, that if we talk about this in two weeks, it's still ahead of their next meeting, assuming they meet.
Yeah, we, we don't meet with Merck again until.
Next month.
First Wednesday of every month, March.
Okay.
It'll be the next meeting.
The timing works out. Is everyone okay with that? If we revisit it?
That's what I wanted, yeah.
Yeah. All right. Well, very good discussion. I appreciate that. Thank you, Tony, for all that. And thank you for being here and listening to us. All right.